All right. Good evening. I am Cindy Darling, the mayor of Walnut Creek, and welcome to the Tuesday, May 6th, concurrence, regular meetings of the Walnut Creek City Council and the Parking Authority. The City Council is conducting this meeting from the City Council Chamber. This meeting is being video streamed and can be viewed live or later on the city's website. As some attendees may be participating in their first Walnut Creek City Council meeting, I wanted to welcome everyone and talk briefly about the public comment process. For each agenda item, there will be an opportunity for public comment on the item. Thus, if you desire to speak on an item that's on our agenda this evening, please hold your comments until the City Council gets to that agenda item. Additionally, we have a section on the agenda titled "Public Communication", which is for public comments on items that are not on the agenda. Any comments during the public communication should not relate to an item that is on the agenda this evening. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, we will allocate 30 minutes for public comment at the beginning of the meeting for items not on the agenda, and we will have additional time for public communication for items not on the agenda. They'll be provided at the end of the open session portion of the meeting, if necessary. If you desire to provide a public comment, please complete a speaker identification card and line up behind the lectern at the appropriate time. I'll call you up for each item. Wait your turn, and then when you approach the lectern, please state your name, city of residence for the record, and you'll have two minutes to address the City Council. Please keep in mind that this is a city business meeting. The City Council has adopted rules of decorum to ensure that meetings are conducted efficiently and effectively, and that all members of the public have a full, fair, and equal opportunity to be heard. The City Council Handbook outlines decorum expected in the council chamber and can be found on our website. All remarks should be addressed to the City Council. Please do not use threatening, profane, or abusive language, which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the council meeting. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to make their remarks, and written comments submitted and received up to two hours before the meeting have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record but will not be read separately into the record. And this is the last time I'm going to have to read all that because it's going to be videotaped next time. So, right now, go ahead and please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please. City Clerk Susie Martinez.
Councilmember Deviney.
Here.
Councilmember Francois.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wilk.
Here.
Mayor Darling.
I am here.
And Councilmember Silva is absent due to a planned vacation.
Okay, and at this time, I invite Deborah Erns, the Executive Director of the Contra Costa Midrasha, to accept a proclamation. Just come up here and I will introduce the proclamation, then I'll meet you over there. Since our earliest days, Jewish Americans have been an important part of the American story and have greatly contributed to all areas of American life and culture. On April 20th, 2006, the federal government proclaimed May as Jewish American Heritage Month, stating, "As a nation of immigrants, the United States is better and stronger because Jewish people from all over the world have chosen to become American citizens." And so, we have many generations coming here to our country, and that diversity is part of what makes our country so strong. In recent years, we even here at this council have experienced acts of antisemitism, and these are unconscionable and terrifying echoes of some of the worst chapters of human history. But I choose to look at the light and the brightness and recognize that the diversity in our community makes us all stronger. And today, we have invited Deborah to come and speak with us, and I will come over here and present this and let you do your thing.
Thank you. I bring with me tonight Seth Raphael, who's one of our teen members of our community. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Darling. Thank you to the city of Walnut Creek, to each council member, to Mayor Darling, for this proclamation honoring Jewish American Heritage Month. I am the Executive Director of Contra Costa Midrasha, which is a role I've held for 18 years, and we're honored to be here with you.
Hey, everyone. I'm Seth Raphael, and, as mentioned, I'm a member of that Contra Costa Midrasha program, as well as a longtime resident of the city of Walnut Creek, and as some of you know, a member of the Youth Commission on the Walnut Creek City Council. Midrasha, for some references, is a Jewish youth program that we've had here in Walnut Creek for, as you said, the last 38 years, which is crazy. And I've had the privilege of being part of it for the last five years.
Thank you, Seth. We are proud to have been a part of the community for 38 years, and we're grateful and proud to be part of this vibrant community.
Yeah, and I am so fortunate to live in a city like Walnut Creek, where I don't feel threatened in my Jewish identity, and I feel free to practice the religion that I choose.
Contra Costa Midrasha aims to create community and connection for our teens and our team of educators, and we also work to give back to our community through our intergenerational program with senior citizens, many of whom live in Walnut Creek, including Councilman Wilk's mother as part of that program, and also our service projects and our philanthropic work throughout the community.
So, for all those reasons, we want to thank you for honoring us and the whole Jewish community of Walnut Creek with this proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you get a picture?
You guys want a picture?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, Matt, can you come out and do a picture?
And Deborah, I just want to say thank you so much for the involvement that you've had in all of this. Both of my kids went through Midrasha, one of whom just got married this last weekend, if you can believe that. And both were bar mitzvah at Temple Benetikvah. I was bar mitzvah cross-country, but very proud to be able to have this proclamation, have you be able to accept it on behalf of the Jewish community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go over here.
Okay, great.
If everybody wants to come out.
Come on, everybody.
That's my mom.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much.
It's for you.
Sure. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks, you. Oh, sorry.
When we get to public comment, we've got more proclamations to come.
In addition to Jewish American Heritage Month...
It is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and accepting the proclamation today will be the various student organizations from Northgate High School, including the Taiwanese Student Association, the South Asian Student Association, and the Korean Culture Club. Originally, the Polynesian Heritage Club was hoping to be here, too, and then they ended up not being able to make it because it is the crazy time of year in high school. So, Asian American and Pacific Islanders have played an essential role in our history, from serving our nation to advocating for civil rights. In 1978, they passed a resolution through the House and Senate declaring it Asian Pacific Heritage Week, and in 1990, they expanded it and made it a full month because there's so much to celebrate here. We offer our thanks to everybody here for bringing their culture to us and their contributions, the rich heritage of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. It's a diverse population, as recognized by the number of clubs I found out at Northgate. Many distinct ethnicities, many different dialects, many different cultures, and some really great food. So, that's all to the good. And we're trying to redouble our efforts to be welcoming. There was a surge during COVID of anti-Asian hate, and that was very unfortunate, and we hope that people can continue to learn to live together and enjoy each other's company, enjoy each other, and see the humanity in one or the other. So, I will meet you guys over here, and I will let you guys introduce yourselves, and then we'll do the proclamation, and we'll do a picture. So... Who's first? You're first. You're at the front. Here you go. There's your proclamation. Go ahead and introduce yourselves and say what club you're in.
Hi, I'm Deviani Betra.
I'm Mira Shankar. And we're a part of the South Asian Student Association on Northgate.
Yeah, do a little bit.
We just want to say thank you, Mayor Darling, City Clerk Martinez, and the other members of City Council for this honor. This proclamation means a great deal to the South Asian Student Association, and it highlights our message to spread our culture and recognize it alongside our community.
Your support means a lot to us, and we look forward to keep promoting cultural diversity and fostering a supportive community both in and out of school. So, thank you so much again for recognizing us.
Here's your proclamation. Then we'll go out there.
Okay.
This is less rehearsed this time.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Yu, and I'm president of Korean Culture Club at Northgate.
Hi, I'm Claire Sewell. I'm vice president of Korean Culture Club at Northgate.
And we're very proud to represent Korean Culture Club today. We founded this club at the start of this school year in order to share and celebrate the history and traditions of Korean culture.
Every meeting, we have a new topic that we focus on, whether it be language, or food, or culture, and our goal overall is just to teach people about the richness of our culture while we foster a educated student body on our campus.
Thank you for recognizing Asian American Pacific Islander Month, and thank you so much for the proclamation. We are very grateful to be part of tonight's celebration.
Thank you.
Here is yours.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Katie Huang.
Oh, and I'm Penelope Chang.
We're presidents of the Taiwanese Student Union at Northgate High School, and we like to help people connect and share our culture.
We're also partnered with the East Bay Taiwanese Association to help connect our club to the bigger Taiwanese community.
There may not be a large amount of Taiwanese students at Northgate, but our club is open to anybody who wants to learn.
Thank you very much for this proclamation and for recognizing our club and giving us this opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's a big round for everybody. Come on over here. Come on. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Thank you for making the trip down here. I really appreciate it. Thank you. I'm so glad you guys could make it. Take care.
Thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome. And you can watch it on replay on Walnut Creek TV tomorrow and share it to your Facebook. And now, last but not least, it is National Police Week. And at this time, I'd invite Walnut Creek POA President Shane Blatts to accept the proclamation. In 1962, John F. Kennedy designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, which is in the middle of National Police Week. And there's more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of Walnut Creek Police Department. Since the first recorded death in 1786, there are currently more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the incited states who have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. My daughter's best friend, her husband, was killed last year, and she came to the wedding this weekend and brought the baby. And it was hard to see somebody who was just 28 years old, who is now raising a child on her own, but she has tremendous support from her community. And that's all I'm going to be able to say on that. But there is a vigil, a candlelight vigil memorializing this, and we just all wanted to stop and take a chance, say thank you for all the officers and everything that they do for our community to help keep us safe. So, thank you. Go ahead and...
Thank you. Kind of beat me to my punch. So, I just have a short little speech here. Thank you for the proclamation. So, National Police Week is a time for our country to recognize in solitude and the ultimate sacrifice our sworn law enforcement officers have made for its fellow citizens. This year, in our nation's capital, 232 men and women who have sacrificed their lives will be honored for National Police Week and have their names etched into the law enforcement memorial. I wanted to take a moment to recognize a couple of Walnut Creek natives who have recently tragically killed in the line of duty. Tobin Bolter and Andrew Duarte. Both men grew up in our city and graduated from Bryan Christian High School. Deputy Bolter and Officer Duarte were both young men into their careers in the early phases of their adult lives. They leave behind loved ones, friends, and futures only one could imagine. They, like all of us, chose this profession to be public servants, knowing the risk could cost their lives. I'd like to take a moment of silence in remembrance of their service and sacrifice. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to do a picture?
Sure.
Okay, Matt, come out and do a picture. Come on down. Come on. They're being shy. I took her up to Rose, and she's like... She almost hurt my arm. Sorry.
Everybody's stood here. Smile. Two. Thank you.
Okay, now I'm going to suckle the tears back in and keep going. So, it's all good. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull any item for discussion? Or any staff member wish to pull an item for discussion? Mayor Protem?
Yes, I wanted to pull Item 2E, 2F, 2I... And then 2J.
2J, okay. Does anybody in the audience wish to make a comment on Items 2A, B, C, D, G, H? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
Moved or approved consent calendar items 2A through DG and H.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Deviney.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wilk.
Aye.
Mayor Darling.
Aye. All right, now, we'll go to 2E.
Okay, 2E. This is regarding the Master Consultant Services Agreement, and I just really wanted to ask if it's the city manager or director of Public Works a little bit more about what the need for the eight consulting firms' services over the next five years, and just a little more detail on that.
Yeah, let's have our Public Works Director, Rich Payne, come on up.
Good evening. Rich Payne, Public Works Director. In terms of the Master Consultant Agreements, we have eight consultants part of this agreement to create flexibility as we're going out for engineering services. You know, one of these companies might be busy. It gives us flexibility, enables us to have multiple engineers, consultants onsite to help us with a variety of different projects. And what was your other question? Sorry.
No, it was really just understanding a little bit more in detail. I think you provided that, but it was... So, at $300,000, this is for each, but this is over the entire amount of the five years, and is it up to $300,000 each?
So, up to $300,000, a total of, if you do the math, eight times three is 2.4. Now, just to clarify, this funding is usually associated with a project. So, if you have a project that you need consultant services, that would be included. And depending on the amount, if it reaches those limits, that it would need to come back to council, at that point, you would be able to approve the total amount of the project, including those consultant services in many cases.
And is this... Have we done this in the past, then, over the course of the last five years?
So, in the last probably couple of years, we've changed it a little bit in that a lot of these consultant services agreements have been on the books for quite a long time. Because of some changes in our procurement policies, things that better align with that procurement policy, we've been trying to meet those commitments that we've made in that procurement policy, and some of those restrictions are outlined in this new way of contracting out consultant services.
Great. Thanks, Rich.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions? I'll make a move to then approve Item 2E.
Unless there's any public comment? Nope? Okay, go ahead.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Wilk.
Aye.
Councilmember Deviney.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Mayor Darling.
Aye. Thank you, guys. 2F.
2F, all right. Continuing on the revenue front. So, maybe the most misunderstood questions that I get on a consistent basis have to do with police or traffic citations, not moving vehicle, but parking citations specifically. And because Walnut Creek is rich, we could be making so much money, or we're making too much money. So, my question's a little bit more, what does the city see when it comes to citation revenue chief? And where does it go?
I was all ready to talk about traffic sites, too, but we can talk about parking sites.
Okay.
I thought you were going to make me have to do math in my head.
No, that's all right. I wouldn't have the, I got my calculator, so I can do that myself. Those are my questions.
Mayor, if I could, just to add brief, I just wanted to clarify, since we're talking about parking and you mentioned money and generation, the city charges for parking not to make money, but to manage parking in order to make it more available by influencing behavior about how long people park in certain areas, where they park, whether it's the green meters that are more in the core downtown, the purple meters that are a little bit extended, or in the parking garages. That's the purpose of charging for parking, and then obviously, there's the enforcement arm in order to effectuate it, otherwise, obviously, it may not be complied with.
Well, and not a question, but it was something I was going to bring up later during our finance, but to that point, I think we only wind up with a surplus of a few hundred thousand each year, despite the millions of dollars in parking revenue that comes in, because we support infrastructure projects like our parking garages, staff, other items. So, again, to the point, I don't think that we're, we're charging people parking tickets as just trying to get more money from the residents. It goes all, goes back into the, the fund that maintains our parking infrastructure.
Yes, that's correct. Our population more than doubles in size during most days, especially Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, you see a lot of influx of people. Everybody wants to be able to park in a convenient location, that, there's a lot of logistics behind that, and the idea is to make it equitable for anybody who wanted to visit Walnut Creek to be able to pay something that was affordable to have a convenient parking spot.
All right. Anybody want to comment upon parking tickets? Because you love them so much, so go ahead and...
I'll make a motion to approve item 2F.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Wilk.
Aye.
Councilmember, Councilmember Davini.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Mayor Darling.
Aye. All right, 2I.
Just working down the list here. Okay, well, this is really no questions, I just wanted to really express thanks to the Art and Rec Department completing the Boundary Oak Golf Course Driving Range. If anybody used, had used it before, you would have noticed that it needed some improvements. The improvements have been done. They look great. I was actually down there this last week. It's grass, there are advanced in computer and technology of ball trackers, and you can play different courses. It just looks terrific, so I really wanted to give a pat on the back to the city for being able to complete that. I did have one quick question, actually, and that is, previously, there was an overhangover about a dozen or so different, different driving range tees, and there aren't any overhangs now. Is that going to be something that we're going to look at in the future?
Short answer is yes, we're looking at various options, some that may be more temporary in nature, and some that would be longer term.
Great, thanks. Protect against skin cancer. Move to approve.
Okay, anybody, public comment? Seeing none?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Wilk.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Davini.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
All right, so we have made it through the consent calendar, and now we are at public communication. This portion of the meeting is reserved for comment on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. We can request clarification or refer the item to staff. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be allocated at this time for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for public communication for items not on the agenda will be provided at the end of the meeting as necessary. So, please step forward if you wish to provide public comment. Complete a speaker card. Cards are available on the counter near the entrance. Once at the podium, introduce yourself, your city of residence for the record, and consistent with city policies related to public comments, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks. And we will start now at 6:30 and go till, no later than 7:00. So, please step forward.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members and city staff. My name is Mary Holder Negley. I'm a resident of Walnut Creek on Naranha Drive, just down the street from Foothill Middle School. I'm concerned, and I'm sure you've heard this concern before, I'm going to reiterate it on behalf of my neighbors. I'm concerned about the sloppy, speedy, and at times dangerous driving habits of young people on e-bikes and scooters, not only down our street, but throughout Walnut Creek. When we moved into this neighborhood of Walnut Creek, we've been residents for almost 30 years, but we moved to this street a year ago, I was aware we were on a major approach to a middle school, and I absolutely love the fact that kids are riding their bikes to school. That is not the issue. But what is alarming to me now is the way that they are driving motorized vehicles, e-bikes and scooters, way too fast, not following rules of the road, in particular, riding on the wrong side of the street, and sometimes without helmets. But the situation has expanded, I believe, beyond our school zone. Just last week, in downtown Walnut Creek, I saw three kids zooming through and almost mowing down a pedestrian on a crosswalk. I've been riding a bicycle in this area for almost 30 years, and I know the adult biking community has been working hard to maintain good behavior on trails, streets, and in the open spaces. Bicyclists are required to follow rules of the road common to automobiles, but middle schoolers have not taken driver's training, not passed a written test, and it is showing. Before someone gets hit and injured, is there any way the city could sponsor an educational campaign for e-bike users pitched to kids under the age of 16? I know Foothill has some sort of bike safety program. We need to do that more after Christmas, when kids get their bikes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We do have programs going on, but I, like you, I think many of us have noticed an uptick in the kids, so, thank you.
Hello, my name is Barbara Guinness. I've been a resident of Walnut Creek since 1996. In the December 2024 and April 2025 Prose Meeting, the city staff outlined plans to convert a very narrow, single-track trail in, that's called the Lime Ridge Quarry Social Trail, to an official multi-use trail. Staff's plans include allowing all users, widening the trail, adding two staircases, adding safety barriers, adding stepping stones, placing the bike trail right next to a pedestrian trail. And the city staff says this will occur without new, new construction. This quarry trail is very narrow, primarily 20 to 24 inches wide, filled with native plants, very near sightings of whip snakes, horned lizards, king snakes, jackrabbits, and according to the city and municipal codes, bikes are only supposed to be on eight-foot-wide trails. The Lime Ridge Master Plan states approximately 97% of the land shall be an open space preserve for Lime Ridge. And the master plan goals are to retain, protect, and rehabilitate the national, natural environment. And the recreational value is supposed to be for passive uses, such as hiking, horseback riding, pitt nicking, and history and nature study. The quarry should be treated, and this is according to the master plan, should be treated as a nature preserve, as it has lots of different native plants. So, how does converting the Lime Ridge Quarry Trail from an official trail, unofficial trail, to an official trail meet the policy standards of the Lime Ridge Master Plan? And how does it meet the municipal code stating bikes are only permitted on eight-foot-wide trails? The Lime Ridge Open Space is a nature preserve. City staff cannot overrule the policies included in the Lime Ridge Master Plan, and they cannot ignore the municipal codes.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you're doing for the city.
Next.
Good evening, council, City Council and Mayor Darling. My name is Renee Zeimer. I live in Maraga. I am a former employee of the City of Walnut Creek. I was the Youth and Family Services Coordinator, and I am also a former board member of Contra Costa Midrashah. So, I was really excited to hear that you were giving a proclamation in honor of Jewish American Heritage Month. And in that spirit, I would just like to call to your attention, an educational venture that occurred between 1912 and 1932, between a Jewish businessman Julius Rosenwald and Booker T. Washington, a notable African-American educator. Together, they constructed and operated a network of more than 5,000, what came to be known as Rosenwald Schools in the South. And they began to educate young African-American children, improving the learning environments with incredible learning outcomes. Some of the notables, the graduates of the Rosenwald Schools are Maya Angelo, James Baldwin, Ralph Ellison, Langston Hughes, John Lewis, and many, many more. Education is foundational to Jewish Americans, and, and in that spirit, I wanted to come and share this, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention that there is a special election going on today to improve the learning environments of our schools. Measure T, the Akalani's Union High School District Parcel Tax Measure. You have a few more hours to mail in your ballot, and, and please support our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
Okay. Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Dr. Jane Wong, and I live in Walnut Creek. I am a prosthetist at the Dental Implant Center at Walnut Creek, and we are in the Brick Building on the intersection of Civic Drive and Ignacio Valley Road. Our building association donates our parking lot for the city to use during awesome city events like Oktoberfest. We are an office of three specialists with a support team of seven. Our founding doctor, Dr. Scott Keith, has served the Walnut Creek community for over 25 years. Dr. Quincy Gibbs has served the community for eight years, and I have been in the community for one year. This year marks our 25th anniversary, and we are celebrating with an open house. We would like to invite the members of this City Council to stop by. The open house will be on Thursday, May 29th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Our SVPs will be appreciated if you are able to attend. I will leave the flyer and our cards with the clerk. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to seeing you.
Thank you, and welcome to Walnut Creek.
Thank you.
Sounds like you've made your first year here, so, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Darling and City Council members. I'm Kathy Hemmway, the Executive Director with your Walnut Creek Downtown Association. I wanted to just share a couple of updates from our organization since I was last here in March. We have a new, a new Board of Director leadership, so we have recently elected President Tracy Dietline from Broadway Plaza, Vice President Jennifer Perry from the Ballet School Performing Arts, Rola Gaben as Secretary, who's owner of Lita, Broderick, and World Famous Hot Boys, Treasurer Gary Skrull from Somas, and Past President Brian Hirahara from BH Development. So, those are our board leadership, or leaders at this time. Also, Walnut Creek Downtown launched a new website about two weeks ago, so would love for everyone to visit the site at walnetcreekdowntown.com. It features new improved merchant directories with content that can be uploaded directly from our downtown businesses, interactive maps, event calendars, and curated visitor itineraries to the downtown. So, we're excited for that improved site to be live. On April 20th, we launched the Painted Piano Program, so we have seven pianos that are dotted throughout the downtown, and we had over 50 volunteers that came to paint the pianos, and one of the pianos was painted by the residents at the Kensington Retirement Community. So, they spent the day painting the piano, and then we delivered it to the Kaiser Walnut Creek campus, so they're enjoying that over on Newell. And a list of the piano locations is also available on our website, and we're grateful to the sponsors that made that program possible for its fifth season. And the pianos will be out through October. Next week, we launched the Locust Street Festival, so formerly known as the First Wednesday, and we have 70 booths on May 14th, and then each of the preceding events will take place through August. So, we're excited to bring a big party to the downtown on Locust Street. And then lastly, I'll end with some good news about new businesses that have joined the downtown business community. Mr. Dewey's Cashew Ice Cream, Sweet Maple, Poppy Bank, Viori, High Line Jewelry across the street just opened four days ago, and JP Morgan. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I look forward to the first, not First Wednesdays, whatever they're called now. It'll be fun.
Mayor Darling, members of the council, Bob Lynch, I for the Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Bureau. Sorry about the gravel-gurdy voice here tonight. I come here for two reasons. Number one is to acknowledge that the graduating class of Leadership Contra Costa that met in this building on May 1st, the topic of housing and transportation. Mayor Darling was part of our panel on housing, and I want to acknowledge Manar Boardman, who was one of the day chairs, that the group toured the transit center on the second floor, felt like they could control the traffic, which is an interesting thought. The Housing and Transportation Day is probably the most sought-after day as far as our, our class members are concerned, and I just wanted to mention that the city clerk passed out the yearbook for today's group. It also lists the alumni, which is best we could estimate, there may be 60 to 70 city staffers that have gone through the program in a period of time, and that's probably underestimating. So, I just want to thank the city for allowing us to have the session up on the third floor. Last thing I want to mention is the Art and Wine Festival, which also have a little flyer. Also want to thank the city for not only police engagement, but also traffic engineers on how to get people in and out of downtown during this session, the weekend of May 31st and June 1st. And we're very excited about moving it. We loved Heather Farm, but we think this is going to be a great boon for our, our businesses downtown. So, thanks again.
Thank you very much. I really enjoyed coming in and talking about housing, and it was, sometimes it seems like a topic that could be just as dry as toast, but the, the people in the Leadership Program really paid attention, asked good questions, and seemed like they really understood what we were talking about in all the different convoluted glory that is housing in California, so...
Thanks for being...
Thank you for guys doing that. That brings us to the end of public comment. So, now, next on the agenda is council member and staff announcement reports on activities or requests. Is City Attorney, is there anything to report out from closed session?
Madam Mayor, the council did meet this evening for real property negotiations.
The Housing and Transportation Day is probably the most sought-after day as far as our class members are concerned, and I just wanted to mention that the city clerk passed out the yearbook for today's group. It also lists the alumni, which is best we could estimate. There may be 60 to 70 city staffers that have gone through the program in a period of time, and that's probably underestimating. So I just want to thank the city for allowing us to have the session up on the third floor. Last thing I want to mention is the Art and Wine Festival, which also have a little flyer. Also want to thank the city for not only police engagement, but also traffic engineers on how to get people in and out of downtown during this session, the weekend of May 31st and June 1st. We're very excited about moving it. We loved Heather Farm, but we think this is going to be a great boon for our businesses downtown. So, thanks again.
Thank you very much. I really enjoyed coming in and talking about housing, and it was, sometimes it seems like a topic that could be just as dry as toast, but the people in the Leadership Program really paid attention, asked good questions, and seemed like they really understood what we were talking about in all the different convoluted glory that is housing in California.
Thanks for being.
Thank you for guys doing that. That brings us to the end of public comment. So now, next on the agenda is Councilmember and staff announcement reports on activities or requests. Is City Attorney, is there anything to report out from closed session?
Madam Mayor, the council did meet this evening for real property negotiations and did provide direction to your real property negotiators. That's the only report we'll action.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yeah, good evening, Dan Buckshai. City Manager, just one update this evening, a reminder and a call-out to folks who may be interested in serving one of the city's advisory commissions. The deadline is a week from yesterday, so May 12th, we have openings on our Planning Commission, Design Review Commission, Building Appeals Board, and Library Commission. So anyone who wants to get more involved in the community and help serve the city and their fellow residents, go to walnutcreekca.gov and apply soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Francois.
Okay. I thought you might go this direction. I might. Thank you, Mayor. So we've been, the last time we met was a few weeks ago. I know we had a retreat between then, so I have a few items to report on. Let's see, going back to what was, I think, the weekend we celebrated Earth Day here in Walnut Creek, I participated along with the mayor and the community cleanup crew, a great organization led by Karen Mariner and a bunch of well-meaning, big-hearted community volunteers. Thanks to our city staff for partnering with them. I led a crew that worked from the BART station around Target to downtown, and I know the mayor had another crew that she was on, and it, great to see a great turnout. Kathy Hemonway from Walnut Creek Downtown was, joined me, and we also had some young people from a group called Pledge for Humanity, which I had not heard of before, but it was nice to see other opportunities for youth volunteerism and joining us and making the Walnut, making downtown look even better than it already does. Then, along with Councilmember Silva, I serve on the City Council Housing and Community Development Committee. We met on April 21st. We had two items on our agenda. The first was to make recommendations to this body on expenditures of affordable housing funds, and we selected, we made recommendations for selection of two applicants, Habitat for Humanity and RCD, the Civic Crossing Project here at Ignacio and Civic, an all-affordable project, and the Habitat for Humanity Project is something along 40 or 50 units near the Pleasant Hill BART station. So that'll be coming to the council for a future action item. And then we also were, provided an update on the One Bay Area Grant Transportation Funding, which our city relies on to the tune of millions of dollars each budget and funding cycle. And the rules have gotten, changed a bit and become a little more strict, that they want to see certain density numbers reached within a half-mile radius of the BART stations in order to be eligible for these grant funds. So it's not so much an issue with our Walnut Creek Station because we meet those density numbers, but we don't meet them necessarily for the Pleasant Hill BART Station, which includes a swath of Walnut Creek, and some of it's under an interchange, and a lot of, there's a lot of low-density residential in that area. So we're working through that in addition to, or staff as I should say, in addition to some of these affordable housing production and preservation policies, because you have to show not only that you meet the density numbers, but that you have programs in place in your housing element to meet some of these other policies. So that's still a work in progress, and I know Councilmember Silva is working hard in talking to the folks that she knows at MTC and elsewhere to try to get greater clarity on the density numbers so that we can be competitive and not lose out on these very significant transportation funds. The pleasure of meeting with the Youth Leadership Commission, I think that was also on April 17th. Always impressed. Just a great group of young people that, several of them have served for more than one year now, and some are at the beginning of their service, and a lot, a few of them are siblings of, you know, I remember that last name. So it's good to get updates on their siblings, but also to hear kind of their impressive stories, including a lot of the seniors who are going to really great schools and have bright futures. So I'm proud of their service to our community and enjoyed visiting with them. Along with all of you, I attended the State of the Chamber Conference. That was right after our last council meeting, I think on April 16th, and it was nice to hear from Caitlin Sly, who's the incoming Chair of the Chamber, and also the President and CEO of the Contra Costa Food Bank. And so I pledged to her that we would all roll up our sleeves and do some volunteer work for her, so we'll have to get a date on the calendar to put some food packets together. And I also serve as the, on the Recycle Smart Board, as I've reported on before, I'm on an ad hoc committee that we're meeting to make recommendations to the full board on the selection of our next collection contract. We received two proposals. They're from providers that currently provide services to us, so they're not new names, Republic Services and MDR, but we went through a competitive process, and we thought that was important, given the increased costs that we've seen. We have seen, have some issues with service, not so much in Walnut Creek, but in Arinda, Lafayette, some of the hillier, harder areas for the big garbage trucks to service on a regular basis. So we're going through that process now, and I think we're close to finalizing a recommendation that'll go before the full board in July. And then this last Saturday, I had the pleasure of attending, am I going to get cut off pretty soon?
No, you're fine.
Okay. The Lindsay Wildlife Experience's 70th Anniversary. As many of you know, their home is here in Walnut Creek, over in the Larky Park area. Used to live, my wife and I lived a few blocks away from there when the kids were little, and we were there almost on a weekly basis. It's just such a great community asset. I also saw Kathy Hemonway there, who's on their board, so we were spending a lot of time together over the last few weeks. And got to, I didn't get to meet her, but I got to see Atsa the Bald Eagle, who's just a remarkable bird creature that they have on display at the Lindsay, and some really cute guinea pigs, and visit with Karen DeChesne, and just tell them how proud we were of having the Lindsay in our city, what an asset they provide to our residents, especially if there's injured animals, childhood education, just a great feel-good event. Saw a lot of families, young children. Supervisor Carlson was there as well, and I was able to point out that that building that the Lindsay's in is actually a city building, so we view this as very much a partnership. The city has entered into a long-term lease with Lindsay, and we want to see them succeed and are just proud and happy to have them here. And then finally, I would just like to wish the mayor and all the mothers in the audience here and out there, a very happy Mother's Day this weekend. Thank you for all you do to make our worlds a better place. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember DeFini.
Yeah, so it's been a few weeks since our last meeting, so a few things have happened during that time. I also attended, or we all did, the State of the Chamber, and that was a very nice event. I think Councilmember Francois has already spoken to that, but there was the Challenger Baseball Event, which was an opportunity to spend time with kids with disabilities that are playing baseball through the Little League Program, and it was a regional event that's been hosted here in Walnut Creek for the last 15 years. So it was really great to participate in that and see all the hard work that's going on to put that program together. So very, very, very cool program. We had the Authors Gala over the weekend, and that was an opportunity to support the Walnut Creek Library Foundation. It's a very nice event held in the library, so if you haven't attended that, it's, you know, open to the public, so obviously, you know, maybe purchase tickets for next year. Had two events with the Walnut Creek Police Department. They had the walkout ceremony for Captain Brown, who just retired, and that was, that was very touching to see everyone out there on the front steps clapping for him and shaking hands, and some nice words were spoken, and I was honored to be a part of that. And then also attending the Walnut Creek Police Department Honors and Awards Ceremony, that was in the leisure just a few days ago. Also very nice event. It was nice to see folks there with their families, and Chief Knox had some very nice personal touches that he added to everybody's awards, and so I was honored to be a part of, to be there for that event. It was very nice. Finally, the City Leader Summit, liaison to League of Cities, and they had a three-day event up in Sacramento that I attended with Mayor Pro Tem Wilk and Mayor Darling. That was a really cool event. We had an opportunity to advocate. We spent today going to our local assembly member and advocating for some positions that the city is supporting. And then there were some educational material, educational talks. One of the ones that I thought was very interesting was, he started off the lecture saying, you know, there's this elementary school that was found on a toxic waste dump, and they discovered it because there was like black ooze bubbling up through the dirt. And then there was, and he said, you know, but that raised the cancer rates in some of these kids. Then he compared that to what it's like to be socially isolated and the increased morbidity and mortality associated with social isolation. And he said, so if I had my choice between, you know, putting my kids in a place that was socially isolated versus sending them to school on a toxic waste dump, he's like, I picked the toxic waste dump. But the point was how to plan our city and how to look at opportunities to promote social connectivity through planning, and we will be updating our general plan, so it'll be interesting to look at how we can promote social connectivity in the city during that process.
You're on.
I'm on, all right. Well, over the last few weeks, we did have a Finance Committee meeting. I'm not going to go into that very much because we were going to be doing that all the rest of the meeting tonight on the budget. As the liaison representative to County Connection, did have some good news to report, that the federal grant approval for the hydrogen fuel cell station infrastructure is going through, which is great news. Buses will not be manufactured until at least 2028. Not as great news, because the two bus manufacturers in the country are not currently going to be manufacturing any zero-emission buses due to uncertainty about what will be approved in the federal administration, put it that way. Today is Transit Day, though, in the Bay Area nationwide. In fact, I have my sticker on. County Connection was a participant in the regional press conference today at the Ferry Building in San Francisco with all the major transit agencies. And as the Chair for County Connection, we announced its youth ride program that'll be running for two summer months, in June and July, June 1st through July 31st. Marketing staff has developed a marketing and outreach program that'll begin immediately. We should all be seeing this for any families out there that, or parents with kids that are under 18. This initial pilot would require, would not require youth to show identification or a pass, which we believe have been a deterrent for youth to use transit. This is really a great way to start getting people, kids using the buses more. So we're going to be seeing this a lot throughout the media in the next couple of days because we want people to get out of their cars. We had the mayor and the Chair, Mayor Pro Tem Chair Quarterly Meeting with all of our commissioners a couple of weeks ago, that it's always great to be able to share that kind of information, and as we heard the city manager talk about some of the vacancies in the commissions, please do apply. We want residents to really be involved in the city. It's that great sharing that makes Walnut Creek the great city that it is. As Councilmember DeFini mentioned, we were able to attend the CalCities Leadership Conference in Sacramento. I wanted to give just a little bit more details. When we have these meetings with advocacy meetings with our state assembly members and state senators, we're talking about the issues that are of most importance to the city, the citizens in Walnut Creek, all of our residents. This includes disaster prevention, insurance, housing, and homelessness. So these are the things that we know are really impacting our cities, and this is what we're having these really fruitful discussions about over those couple of days. So when we're out at these conferences, this is not something where we're just out there chatting and greeting and having dinner. That is not the case. We are truly working to share in collaborative efforts with our regional cities and elected officials from across the state. I was honored to emcee the Authors Gala. This is huge because it's the biggest library fundraiser of the year. If you love your libraries, and you want to see more eBooks, and you want to see more utilization in our libraries, both the downtown one and the Ignacio Valley one, then by all means, support your libraries. And I know several of us here have, are hoping, and hoping in the future to be able to have even Sundays available in the libraries, and there actually is a pilot program going on in the county right now. So please do support your libraries. And all of that I mentioned is really important, and yet it takes a backseat to the most important thing for me over the last few weeks, was that my son got married over the weekend. So I'll leave it at that.
Mazel tov.
Ah, congratulations.
Yes, those things, so everybody, it's been a busy couple of weeks, so people have hit most of the other things. A couple of things that have not gotten hit, Sister Cities. We had the youth contingent from Seafolk and Natchoto here, and we got to meet them here in City Council, and we let them wander around the city and take pictures and enjoy themselves. It's always fun to, yeah, I practice my Hungarian, and I'm really bad at it. As I told Bob Lynchite, I really enjoyed talking to the Leadership Contra Costa, and if anybody is interested in learning more about how your community works, I strongly recommend you sign up for that program. It gives you, you go all over the place. You look at courts, you look at water, you look at wastewater, you look at cities, and this and that, and it's, you can learn so much about your community from that. Art and Wine, you can go and drink there, but you can also go and work there. And I think the last time I looked at the signup genius, they're still looking for volunteers on Sunday to help sell tickets. And a couple of us are already signed, I think most of us are already signed up for a ship there, but it's a good chance to help out. And then MCE, I said on MCE, which used to be more in clean energy, now we just call it MCE, and some interesting things going on there with this federal funding, now you see it, now you don't. It does sound like we are going to get the federal funding that was to go towards battery storage projects. The program is looking at, trying to get one battery storage project in each of the counties that, where they serve people, and I think I need to get the info and get that over to the city manager, because I think there's opportunities here in Walnut Creek to include battery storage in some of our projects, including the new community center. The other big items that MCE is working on, there, it is cheaper to buy power from MCE than it is to buy it from PG&E, but PG&E has this little surcharge they get to put onto a community choice aggregate power, and that is controlled by the California Public Utilities Commission, and we have been working to get it updated. This is the 15th anniversary of MCE, and that charge was to help PG&E with contracts that they had signed before the customers left them, but it's been 15 years. I know they miss us, but we're not going back. So we're working on that, trying to get that, and that will actually make the recycle, or the renewable energy that comes from MCE cheaper than PG&E across the board. The other thing that is going on, and this has been a subject of discussion for a while, is California, right now, operates its energy market through Cal, through CAISO, which is the California Independent System Operator. We don't have good connections to the other states that are around us. There is some ability to sell back and forth, but it's pretty restricted. Other energy markets in the U.S., including the Southwest Power Pool, are trying to pull other Western states into them, which would make it even harder for us to buy power or sell power out of state. So we are working through the legislative processes here on something called the Pathways Initiative that would broaden the energy market for California to include the Western states around us. Ultimately, Northern Baja and the two Canadian provinces along the Pacific Ocean could be involved in this, but we're not going international right now. We're just trying to get the Western states hooked together. And it offers a lot of opportunity for us. Right now, this time of year, since we're not using a lot of power for air conditioning, there is enough power to supply California's demand at 110% of the current demand, just from solar in California. There's no place to send it. If we could interconnect with some of the other Western states, they have power needs this time of year, and it would help our projects become, they lose a lot of money when they're generating power and nobody can use it. So we're working on it, the Pathways Initiative, there's a piece of- power needs this time of year, and it would help our projects become, they lose a lot of money when they're generating power and nobody can use it. So we're working on it. The Pathways Initiative, there's a piece of legislation going through and a lot of discussions, and trying to work that one out. And that is it for here. And now, the next item is a consideration item. And it is the FY26, FY27 Proposed Budget Overview. And we will have a staff member. Come on down, Rindi, provide the presentation.
All right. Hold on, I have to adjust because I'm short. Good evening, Mayor Darling, Mayor Pro Tem Wilk, and members of the Council. I'm Rindi Azavito, Budget and Procurement Manager for the city. And today I'm going to be giving you an overview of the FY26 and 27 budget. We also have Kirsten LaCasse here, Administrative Services Director, as well as other staff, to help answer any questions that you may have. So today's discussion is a high-level first glance at the FY26 and 27 budget. I'm going to start with some background and a timeline. And then we're going to go into the General Fund Overview, which will include budget balancing strategies and potential, proposed budget balancing actions. Then we'll look at some other funds, which include Measure O, the Parking Fund, and the Boundary Oak Fund. And then we'll talk about reserves. So the action that's requested tonight is that you provide input and feedback regarding the development of the balanced budget for FY26 and 27. All right. So on this slide is a snapshot of the FY26 and 27 Budget Development Calendar. This process actually started back in December. And we've been working as staff for the last several months to put together a draft proposed budget for you all. On April 16th, we took the proposed budget to Finance Committee, and today is Council's First Look. We'll be returning to Finance Committee on May 15th to incorporate any feedback from you all, as well as the master fee schedule. And then in June, we'll be coming twice to Council with final adoption scheduled for June 17th. So for a little bit of background, I'm going to start off with a brief overview of city funds and departments to help contextualize how the city's funds are structured, as well as how these funds are used. On this slide is the main types of funds that are held by the city and some examples of each. The General Fund is the city's main operating fund. Revenue from Measure O, while considered part of that General Fund's category, is held separately in the Measure O Fund. We also have enterprise funds. So these operate similar to a business, and they include downtown parking and enhancement, and the Boundary Oak Golf Course Fund, and these are self-sustaining funds. Special revenue funds are self, or are restricted or committed to a specific purpose. And an example that we'll talk about later is the General Plan Update Fund, which collects fees from development projects to be used for updating the city's general plan. We also have internal service funds, such as the IT Fund and Vehicle Equipment and Replacement Fund, and these charge out to other city funds on a cost reimbursement basis for providing those services. Capital investment program expenditures, which include infrastructure-related work are held in the capital fund. You're going to hear a lot more about that in the next item. The city has seven operating departments, which each fulfill different roles in the city, sometimes overlapping. And some departments, like ASD or Administrative Services, which I'm a part of, and Human Resources, provide primarily internal services, while others provide primarily external services to the community. So Administrative Services provides fiscal control over the city's financial activities, assists departments in preparation and implementation of the budget, and houses the city's IT Division. Arts and Recreation, which includes aquatics, Center for Community Arts, and Walnut Creek Recreation. I just wanted to give you a little bit of, like, sense of scale for the services that the city provides. They hosted 20, over 23,000 participants and held 430 classes in the last fiscal year. Leisure Center for the Arts and Center Rep is also part of Arts and Recreation, and leisure sold over 114,000 tickets last year. There's also the Bedford Gallery and Public Art, and the Boundary Oak Golf Course, which we talked about a little bit earlier, who had 69,000 paid golf rounds. In Community Development Department, there's Housing Development Services, which includes building and planning, as well as code enforcement. And so some stats for them, they processed over 7,000 permit applications and issued those permits, and conducted over 16,000 inspections last year. General Government is the administrative hub for city operations and oversees activities of the different departments, and also helps implement the policies that are set by the Council. So that includes City Manager's Office, City Clerk and City Attorney's Office, Communications and Outreach, Economic Development, Risk and Emergency Management, and Sustainability. And you'll recognize a lot of those from our Council Priorities. Other, so the Human Resources, so recruits and administrates to the city's 386 full-time employees and roughly 400 seasonal and hourly employees. There's also the Police Department, which has an administrative side, which includes investigation, support services like records, property and evidence, and the operation side, which includes patrol, traffic, and special operations like SWAT and the Bomb Squad. Just like a fraction of what they do, they responded to over 38,000 calls for service and 96,000 dispatch calls for service last year. Public Works, another city department, provides a variety of services, including engineering, parks and open space, and operating the Clean Water Program, and maintaining the city's infrastructure and facilities, which includes 69 buildings, 22 parks, over 2,700 acres of open space, and 218 centerline miles of streets. So all that is to say that when we're putting together a budget, that's, which is a two-year spending plan, which allocates resources and programs, to programs and services and projects, that is what this money is intended to support. And for our listeners, if there are, just a couple of quick terms. So when we talk about appropriation, that is the official permission that's given by the City Council to spend money on specific things. And it's important to note that only the City Council can appropriate funds. We'll also be talking about different funds, and you'll hear me refer to fund balance, which is that leftover money after all of the expenses have been paid. And that's a little bit different than reserves, which are really held separately for purposes like financial emergencies or maintaining facilities. So when we're putting together the budget, staff used the city council's adopted budget goals, adopted budget policies, and the Council priorities to help guide budget development. So accordingly, the budget aims to further the city's mission, vision, and values, to establish a financial plan for the next two years, and to strike that balance between maintaining fiscal health and continuing to provide programs and services to the city's many customers. City Council's budget policies, as adopted, provide for the following guidance: that the city's budget shall be balanced, that again, mission, vision, and values guides our budget development process, that budget balancing strategies should address both short and long-term gaps, that one-time funding should be used for one-time expenditures, that we fully fund our reserves, and that the city considers judicious use of debt for funding one-time capital projects. Earlier this year, the Council adopted their FY26 and 27 Council Priorities, and staff also considered these when adopting the budget. They include economic development and downtown vitality, environmental sustainability and climate action, the General Plan Update, park and recreation facilities, and public safety and social wellness. To, at the very start of developing the process, we go through a long process to develop the budget. And when we start, we first create what's called a baseline. To get there, we take the operations and maintenance budget for the departments in FY25, which is the year we're in right now. We then add expected or known increases, things like insurance, utilities, and other unavoidable costs. And then we add personnel and CalPERS costs based on our latest labor agreements, as well as CalPERS funding requirements. And then we update revenues based on information provided from our city's consultants, as well as by the departments. And those things together get us to that baseline budget. So that was already a lot. I just want to say I'm going to be stopping for questions throughout this presentation. So if you have any now on what I've shown so far, I'm happy to take them, before we jump into the actual budget overview.
Any questions?
Okay.
You're not losing them yet, Rindi.
That's good. Okay. It also gives me an opportunity to take a few sips of water if you have a question. So now jumping into the General Fund budget. So when we develop the budget, we've considered recent local, state, and federal and global economic trends, including slowed economic growth and some of the reduced consumer spending. I also want to acknowledge there is considerable uncertainty about, around changing federal policies, recently implemented tariffs, and market reactions to these. Staff is continuing to monitor for those impacts, and this is using, this budget is prepared using the information that we have today. So as you can see on this slide, the baseline revenue and expenditures shown here would result in a projected deficit in both fiscal year '26 and '27. And this is primarily driven by slower revenue growth and increases in costs, which we'll go into detail on these later in the presentation. Additionally, during the budget development process, staff also identified potential budget augmentations that we're recommending of 520,000 in fiscal year '26 and 650,000 in fiscal year '27. These augmentations or additions to the budget are proposed to support Council and Department priorities and help maintain existing service levels, and we'll also discuss those in more detail. So in total, the projected ongoing deficit in fiscal year '26 is before any budget balancing actions are taken, and before one-time costs are added, and without contributions to reserves, would be 4.97 million in fiscal year '26 and 6.33 million in fiscal year So we talked about that kind of before we take any of these budget balancing actions. The numbers that you see now, kind of going forward as we talk about revenues and expenditures, are going to be the numbers that we're proposing at the end of the day, after accounting for all of the proposed budget balancing actions and changes that are included in this budget. So on the revenue side, General Fund revenues are currently projected in fiscal year '25 as of the second quarter budget update to be 102.58 million. In fiscal year '26 and '27, staff has projected modest revenue increases of 4.7% and 3.5% each year. So after including that projected revenue growth, proposed fee increases, and transfers in from reserves, General Fund revenues are projected to be 107.35 million in fiscal year '26 and 111.14 million in fiscal year '27. So the table on the left details the different types of revenues that are collected by the city. Nearly three-quarters of the city's revenues are general revenues, and that includes property tax, sales tax, and transient occupancy tax. Department revenues, which make up about a quarter, include fees for services, or include fees for services. And then transfers in, that category includes transfers from other funds that support staff, for staff support provided in the General Fund, as well as proposed use of reserves, which we're going to discuss in more detail later. One second. So on the next couple of slides, I'll talk more about our general revenue sources. On each of these charts, the green line is the actual expenditures, and the blue line represents the budget. Property tax revenue flattened in fiscal year '25 and is projected to grow more slowly compared with recent years. These projections are based on the most recent information from the city's sales tax consultant and the recent assessed valuations calculated by the county. The slowdown is property tax revenues is largely due to commercial property vacancies, which are negatively affecting valuations, and that is largely a result of remote work. In fiscal year '26, we're projecting 2.3% growth when compared with the second quarter FY25 projection. And in fiscal year '27, we're projecting 4% growth over fiscal year '26. On the sales tax side, the most recent forecast that was provided by the city's sales tax consultant is projecting sales tax revenues to be 31.77 million in fiscal year '26 and 32.74 million in fiscal year '27. And these forecasts are based on the October to December 2024 quarter, which is the last quarter that we have, that includes the true-up that we do, so this lags a little bit. It also does not include any revenue that's received under Measure O. Sales tax in fiscal year '25 has remained relatively flat and is projected to remain flat in fiscal year '26, with only 0.7% growth. Spending habits have slowed, and that's possibly a result of inflation. But growth is expected to return to fiscal year '27 at 3.1%. And again, this is, I want to acknowledge there is uncertainty around this. This is the latest information that we have available to us. On the transient occupancy tax, you can see on this chart that revenue was slow to recover from the pandemic, but is expected to be slightly over budget at the end of fiscal year '25 when looking at that second quarter projection. As the markets become more saturated, TOT revenue for fiscal year '26 and '27 is conservatively held flat in our, in our proposed Significant changes to department revenues include increases in related to programming and facility rental revenue. For example, Arson Recreation is projecting revenue grains from greater rental availability following completion of the Heather Farm Synthetic Turf projects and the Tyce Sports Field lighting projects, which will allow for more rental time. They're also projecting class and camp registrations to increase, and increased ticket sales at the Leisure Center for the Arts and Center Rep performances. Development activity as a whole has slowed in the city. However, several significant development projects are expected in fiscal year '26 and '27 based on submitted applications. Accordingly, Community Development is projecting an increase in revenues of approximately 391,000 compared with quarter two of fiscal year '25. In Public Works, meanwhile, they're expecting a reduction in inspection and plan check fee revenues, but those reductions are offset by rental revenue from current leases of city-owned properties. Staff are also proposing revenue increases to address rising costs, which includes fee increases. And we'll talk a little bit more about revenue changes related to budget balancing in later slides. Any questions on revenues?
Questions? I'm just all sad.
Okay, I'm going to jump into expenditures then. So General Fund expenditures are currently projected to be 102.18 million in fiscal year '25. And again, that's based on the Q2 projection for fiscal year '25. After including the non-discretionary budget increases, proposed ongoing and one-time budget augmentations, and budget balancing actions, General Fund expenditures are projected to be 106.99 million in fiscal year '26 and 110.9 million in fiscal year '27. And again, that's at the end of the day after including everything we're proposing here today. So the majority on the expenditure increases are being driven by non-discretionary costs, which includes utilities, insurance premiums, and legal services, contract and subscription services, CalPERS and normal and unfunded accrued liability costs, as well as adjustments based on labor agreements, and minimum wage increases that departments aren't able to absorb without service level impacts. So just for a sense of scale, UAL has gone up about 75% since 2018 and is projected to go up another million dollars over this next two-year budget cycle. Insurance has gone up the past couple of years, around 15 to 20% each year. Animal Services has averaged about 15% increases each year, too. So just a sample of some of these cost drivers. Additionally, staff are proposing budget augmentations to add one-time and ongoing funding to support Council and Department priorities and help maintain service, existing services. And these include funding for the General Plan Update, as we talked about before. So that would be professional and legal services. In addition, and this amount in the General Fund is in addition to the amount in the General Plan Update Fund, which we'll talk about later, and I'll mention kind of the cost as a whole. There's also proposed changes to support Department priorities, so funding for a lean consultant to help support development services activities, improvements, as well as increasing a part-time office assistant position to full-time in the City Clerk's Office to support public records requests and contract administration, and a new office assistant to position in Public Works to support- and a new office assistant two position in Public Works to support additional administrative reporting and regulatory requirements. There is a senior plan check engineer position that's been added as well to focus on complex projects while serving as team lead for the plan check engineers. And this position is fully offset by a reduction in professional services. The proposal also adds funding for city council support and funding for communications and a community survey. And there are some budget augmentations over on the right, which are proposed to address inflationary cost increases to materials and program costs, such as software, subscription costs. And these increases are not net new, they would help maintain existing service levels. So this table includes all expenditures and transfers out by department, including budget, including proposed budget augmentations and the budget balancing actions. On the right, the pie chart shows the percentage of expenditures attributable to each department. And one thing to note that I wanted to point out on this slide is the city's larger public-facing service departments, Public Works, Arts and Recreation, and the Police Department account for just under three quarters of department expenditures. There are two main categories of expenditures for city departments. One is operations and maintenance, which includes all of the non-personnel costs, ranging from office supplies and utilities to contracts for professional services. Personnel expenses, on the other hand, include cost of salary and benefits for regular employees, including pension, overtime, and hourly staffing. The two charts on this page help visualize the split between those two categories, both on a citywide and a department-specific level. So citywide, personnel makes up about 68% of the city's general fund expenditures, and operation maintenance makes up about 32%. This ratio varies by department, though, as a result of differing department functions and costs. And next, I'm going to go into budget balancing and strategies and proposed actions. So if you have any questions about expenditures, I can answer those.
Councilmember Duffinny?
Can you go back one or two slides? One more? Oh, yeah, that one. Okay. The communications and community survey? What was the, what's the community survey that we're, is that for something that we're doing for?
So every couple of years, the city has conducted a community survey to learn more about what our residents think about how the city's doing and what's important to them. And Dan, if you have anything to add?
A regularly scheduled thing.
Speak out in just a bit more detail. Yeah, the city's done this for, I would say it's four or five times now, going back upwards of 10 to 15 years. It is a national survey that's used by other cities, so it does allow us to benchmark how we're performing relative to other cities in the state or in the country. And having done it now for a while, we would have some longitudinal data within Walnut Creek to see how our, you know, residents are perceiving the services provided by the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Francois?
While we're on that slide, curious what a lean consultant might do and what city council support entails.
Sure. On the city council support side, so this includes funding for the city council to be able to attend conferences and training, some of the things that you already do. And Susie, I don't know if there's any, or Charles, anything else that you'd like to highlight?
I can speak to that at a high level and if we want more detail. This also supports some of our regional, trying to think of the word, not subscriptions, memberships rather, such as A-BAG is an example. Also, the League of Cities, National League of Cities memberships are included. Really what we're doing, there is an increase in this. It's largely to right-size the city council budget. A lot of this was reduced during COVID, when we couldn't really travel much and participate in regional activities. Everything was over Zoom. Now that that's back up and running, we're right-sizing to recognize that we are actually traveling once again to some of these meetings.
And Erica, could I call you up to talk about the lean consultant, please?
Let me, let me add one little extra question. So this is that exercise that as we right-size it in looking at each one of us to, to right-size our own travel so that we're not overspending, we're not all.
That's correct. We will have to manage how many, you know, whether it's conferences or regional meetings each of you attend. Obviously, we're looking in the aggregate. Some of you may go to more than others, and we can offset that. But generally speaking, there'd be a target amount for each council member, that's correct.
And it's getting back to the baseline pre-COVID, not adding kind of new subscriptions or organizations?
Effectively recognizing there have been, you know, inflationary increases, but more or less it's similar to what we were doing pre-COVID.
Okay.
Erica Vanderbran?
Yeah, I'm dying to know what a lean consultant does.
Hello, I'm Erica Vanderbran, Community Development Director. I'm very tempted to talk about Ozempic, but I'm not going to. So in terms of, I guess, let me frame this a little bit so that there are actually three departments that are responsible for development services in the city. There's community development, but then there's also economic development in the city manager's office, and then also the Public Works Department. A lean consultant is a consultant that would come in and help us with process improvements, process journey mapping, customer service, looking through the eyes of the customer, and trying to help us become much more customer-friendly, and then to streamline our processes. And this is intended to speak to the council's priority under economic development.
So it sounds like more of an internal person, because I know we had talked about like an ombudsman that perhaps applicants or developers could go to with issues, but this would be more internal to the organization?
This would be both internal and external, because the intention is to look through the eyes of the customer so that we don't have to get to that point where there's that ombuds having to intervene, and that it's much more transparent, that it is easier to navigate the system, and the, essentially that we've made it a lot easier on our customers to do business, and we're much more customer-friendly.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, if I could just add to that, something that you might all relate to. The county, Contra Costa County, the, the health agency there has used the lean process relative to a lot of its medical operations, and more specifically with the A3 Crisis Response Program, the lean methodology was used. Lean seems a little misleading, so it makes it sound like it's all just about, you know, it is about efficiency ultimately, but it's really about processes and how you structure processes. That lean approach was used to create the A3 program, soliciting input from numerous stakeholders, working that input through with the staff, some of the legal requirements to try to make it as lean as possible moving forward.
Okay, so staff undertook a thorough and really thoughtful process when proposing, developing these proposed budget balancing measures. And we started with developing some budget balancing strategies that we used. So first is that the city council's adopted budget goals and policies would continue to guide our work. Staff were also directed to prioritize implementation of city council priorities and legal mandates, and were asked to evaluate programs and services, thinking creatively about how to minimize impacts to essential services, the community, and staff. Additionally, each department was asked to make meaningful contributions towards balancing the budget, so that we're all working together towards this goal, and to think both near-term and long-term when making proposals. So as a reminder, the ongoing budget deficit after budget augmentations, but before budget balancing solutions, was 4.97 million in fiscal year 26 and 6.33 million in fiscal year 27. To help close this deficit, staff is proposing revenue increases of 180,000 in fiscal year 26 and 640,000 in fiscal year 27. Part of that is related to increases in fees, and we'll be talking about those proposed fees when we come back in June. But part of it is also dependent on proposed budget augmentations. Additionally, staff have proposed operations and maintenance reductions of two, just over 2 million each year, and personnel reductions of about 1.3 million each year. To close the remainder of the deficit and to help strike a balance between fiscal health and service impacts, staff is proposing to use short-term budget balancing solutions of 1.58 million in fiscal year 26 and 2.6 million in fiscal year 27, which I'll discuss in later slides. So on this slide, this is a summary of the different categories of proposed budget balancing actions and their level of implementation difficulty. And while some are low and some are medium or high, all of these do have an impact. But low-difficulties reductions have a lesser impact on service delivery and staff, while medium and high-difficulties reductions represent a deeper reduction that is more impactful to staff and service delivery. You'll also see that operations and maintenance costs span a couple of these categories. I wanted to point out that the travel, training, and conference, and conferences and memberships, while pulled out separately, is part of that O and M bucket, so you'll hear us talking about that, or me talking about that. So over the next two slides, we'll discuss proposed budget balancing actions related to operations and maintenance, or O and M, and the potential impacts. In general, staff would prioritize essential services and strategically use existing resources to minimize service level disruptions. Reductions to budgets for office equipment, technology, and uniforms would require extending the useful life of these items. And overall, there would be a minimal ability to expand service levels, or, and response times could increase. The proposed actions also include a reduction in planned maintenance and repairs. So staff would be more reactively responding to facility needs rather than being proactive. One example is that we would be top-dressing the fields with sand on a less frequent basis. As a result, there could be additional wear and tear on facilities and equipments that aren't being maintained at the same level as they are currently. We would also be reducing custodial services by one day each week where appropriate. Operationally, proposed actions would bring some of the contracted services that are currently done by outside folks in-house and would reduce professional services funding citywide. So for example, proposals include using in-house trucking and using current staff to service downtown recycling stations. As a result, staff would have less capacity for other tasks, and there could be additional wear and tear on city equipment. Proposed reductions also include adjustments to citywide programming. While most programming would continue, there would be less funding available for marketing and advertising, supplies, and contracts related to those programs. Additionally, in order to absorb a portion of their inflation-driven cost increases, Center Rep is proposing to hold five shows instead of six in their season. And finally, employee training and support funding would also be reduced. Essential trainings would continue, but there would be less opportunity for staff to attend trainings and conferences. And employee wellness programs would continue, but only with the most impactful offerings. In total, the proposed operations and maintenance budget reductions totaled just over 2 million, with the majority coming from professional services, travel, and training, and services and supplies. Staff are also proposing budget reductions related to personnel, which includes eliminating or reclassifying positions, reducing overtime, and reducing budgets for hourly staff. For regular personnel, staff have proposed changes equivalent to a reduction of 3.75 full-time equivalent, or FTE positions, as we call them. In Arts and Recreation, there are two senior program assistant positions that would be reduced. One position is vacant, that's that 0.75. The other is filled and would be reduced by 0.25 FTE. This is a result of California's Universal Transitional Kindergarten Program, which has expanded eligibility for TK in the current school year. So as a result, enrollment for the older age group preschool class has declined and will likely continue to do so as the program is fully phased in. Based on these changes, staff is proposing to eliminate the afternoon class offering at Heather Farm Park and would reduce the positions by that combined 1 FTE. Public Works is also proposing to eliminate two vacant positions, a traffic maintenance worker and a landscape maintenance worker. Eliminating these positions would increase wait times and result in slower city response times and potential project delays. And so some examples are, you know, park maintenance and graffiti response times. Arts and Recreation is proposing to eliminate a vacant halftime office specialist position that has not been filled in recent years. And the ASD is proposing to reduce Information Systems Analyst two position from 0.75 to 0.5. While this latter position is filled, this is budgetary only, as the current incumbent is already a halftime employee and would not experience any change. So those last two should have minimal impact. Staff are also proposing to reclassify two currently vacant positions, which would result in budgetary savings. The first is a business analyst position in administrative services. This position would be changed to an office specialist confidential, which would support implementation of the city's procurement policy. In general government, the vacant deputy city manager position would be reclassified to a lower-level assistant to the city manager position, which would reduce the department's ability to support complex cross-departmental initiatives, although most of their work would continue. Other proposed actions include reductions in overtime and non-seasonal hourly staffing. The city's overtime budget is approximately 1.62 million in fiscal year 25, and the budget balancing actions propose to reduce overtime by about 477,000, with the majority or 450,000 coming from the Police Department. Police Department overtime is historically used to offset vacancies and fill shifts, respond to unplanned disruptions, to enhance special investigations as needed. Therefore, reducing overtime could slow investigations, increase processing time in records, and may result in overspending if there are a significant number, or a higher number of significant events. Salary savings from vacant positions is expected to offset normal backfilling of positions that overtime is sometimes used for. Staff are also proposing to reduce funding for non-seasonal hourly staffing, with the majority of the reductions coming from the Arts and Recreation Department. That reduction is approximately 3.9%. This could result in reduced hours for the existing staff and longer wait times for customer service, and regular staff may need to fill gaps in coverage. In all, the proposed budget balancing actions for personnel and overtime total 1.27 million dollars. In line with the strategy for all departments to contribute meaningfully toward balancing the budget, impacts to departments as a percentage are between 2.39 and 4%. And this table does not include budget augmentations that are adding budget back into some of these departments. As mentioned previously, staff is also proposing to use short-term budget balancing solutions to help close the budget deficit while balancing fiscal sustainability and maintaining services. That includes the vacancy rate, which approximates normal staff turnover, and, and the timing of recruitments. In the baseline budget, when we developed that, we used a 5% vacancy rate. However, in recent years, our actual vacancy rate has been between 9 and 11%. So raising the budgeted vacancy rate to 6% would result in approximately 580,000 in budgetary savings each year. This is intended to be a short-term measure, though, and would be reevaluated in the next cycle. And I want to point out, too, that the goal as it relates to hiring would be to eventually return to a more normalized vacancy rate of 5 to 6%. In, on March 18th, council adopted the Pension Trust and Reserve Use Policy, which allows the pension resources to be used to offset rising increase, rising cost increases related to the pension. Staff is recommending to use 1 million of these pension resources in fiscal year 26 and 2 million in fiscal year 27. And so to give you a sense, our total UAL, including the prepayment option, would be 13, just over 13 million in fiscal year 26 and 14 million in fiscal year 27. Okay, so talking about one-time budget balancing. So the proposed one-time budget augmentations total 1.82 million in fiscal year 26 and 290,000 in fiscal year 27. And in order to fund these one-time costs, staff has identified the following actions. First off is to delay hiring, so we would delay hiring an aquatics program coordinator till spring, which would still allow the position to be filled in time for summer. Would also delay hiring of an assistant CDD director and principal planner for six months, which would likely slow processing of projects and would require existing staff to fill their job duties. We would delay hiring the economic development. We would delay hiring the Economic Development Program Manager position for six months, which would delay progress on some items in the ED action plan, although existing staff would continue to implement the plan in the meantime. And then, staff is also proposing to reduce the contribution to the capital fund by 300,000 each year. However, as you'll hear later, the Public Works Department has identified projects that could be closed to offset these impacts so that the total is still the same. Staff is proposing to use the 1.23 million in fiscal year '26 to support the general fund portion of costs related to the general plan update, and that's of the general fund So, that was a lot. This table summarizes what we've talked about so far. So baseline revenues and expenditures resulted in a deficit largely due to those slowed revenues, slowed revenue growth and increased costs for existing services. Additionally, staff have proposed budget augmentations to support department and council priorities and maintain existing service levels. And then to close that ongoing deficit, staff have proposed revenue increases, expenditure reductions, and use of short-term budget balancing options, such as the pension trust and pension resources. Additionally, staff have proposed one-time budget augmentations, which would support the general plan update and support department priorities, offset by one-time budget balancing solutions, including use of the general fund contingency. And with all of that together, including the increases and reductions, the net contribution to fund balance would be 370,000 in fiscal year '26 and 250,000 in fiscal year '27. This small contribution to fund balance provides an opportunity for council to consider a couple of options. One would be to leave it as it is, to help mitigate any unforeseen circumstances, given the uncertainty. Council could also consider funding other priorities or reserves, or potentially lessen the budget impacts of the budget balancing actions. But I do want to point out that in fiscal year '26, all but 90,000 of this contribution to fund balance would be one-time in nature, so it would not be an ongoing availability. And I'm going to pause here for any questions related to budget balancing strategies.
Councilmember Francois?
Okay, thanks, Rindy. Just if you can summarize, the deputy city manager position, is that being eliminated or reassigned to economic development?
It's not being eliminated nor reassigned, it's just changing the classification of that job position. So instead of being a deputy city manager, it would be an assistant to the city manager, which costs less.
Okay. With same general job description and duties?
A little bit different. I mean, it's a, you know, a job that's a little more condensed in scope, so some of the duties that would be done would be picked up by our assistant city manager, or myself, or other staff to help distribute some of that.
Okay. I guess just bigger picture stepping back, it seemed like a fair number of holding off on hiring in community development and city manager offices, and is there any concern among staff that holding off on filling those positions might implicate or make it more difficult to implement some of the council priorities? And if so, which ones might be impacted?
Well, certainly, there is that concern. We think it's a manageable concern. You know, really, what we're looking at is deferring the filling of a couple positions in community development and in city manager's office. Part of that will be a real impact, part of it's budgetary. And so what I mean by that is even if we were to open up recruitments for some of those positions today, it would take us several months to fill that. After we go through the recruitment, the interviewing, the background check, somebody gives notice, they get on here, we're usually looking at at least, you know, three to four to five months, depending upon the position, sometimes less than that, but it's usually in that timeframe. So we are recognizing some of the savings that would be associated with those positions being vacant. In addition, it would be vacant, you know, a little bit longer than what we would prefer. So there are some impacts, we think they're manageable. We think the big-ticket items will continue to move forward, but some of the things that are a little less visible to the community that go on behind the scenes are what would likely be tabled a bit more.
And then, just a question, too, about the vacancy assumptions, because that seems a little more art than science, right? If we're at 9 to 11% and have been since COVID, let's say, I mean, there does seem a little bit of wiggle room there, that we're assuming going from 5 to 6, but presumably we could go even higher than that and monitor it.
We certainly could, a couple of things. One, the goal is to get to 5 to 6%, so that's what we're working towards, and we have been making progress. You may recall, I think we hit a high of 15 or 16% during COVID. We're down, we've been floating somewhere between the 7 to 9 to 11%. It bounces around, I think Rindy gave you the averages. The challenge with bumping it up too high is when you do then dip below that over time, you have to get that money from somewhere else, which means you're cutting budget elsewhere, unless the revenue growth grows at a rate to offset that reduction in vacancy savings. So we're cautious about going too much higher because of the impact down the road of having to find that money to pay for those positions.
Okay.
As opposed to by underestimating, then that becomes a surplus if the vacancy is higher than we're estimating it?
It does, and in fact, the last couple of years, the main driver of the year-end surplus that we've had, that you've used allocate to put into reserves or to other programs, came from that salary savings. That's correct.
And then just last question, can you remind me, we're using 1.23, I think you said, of the general fund contingency. What's the balance of that?
The general fund contingency, sorry, I don't remember off the top of my head.
The balance is 3 million currently.
3 million.
Prior to using that funding.
Thank you.
All right, so just talking about reserve levels, when you talk about the general fund contribution to the capital budget being reduced and then being backfilled, that's being backfilled not by canceling projects, but by projects that are completed that still have funds remaining in their budget?
They'll be speaking more to those during the capital budget item.
Okay, and then on the reserve levels, we were talking about the general fund reserve, and that is distinct from the catastrophic reserve.
Yes, it is distinct. And I have a slide later on in the presentation that shows the reserve balances for our different reserves.
Okay, we'll get into reserves then later. Any other questions at this point? How much longer do you think you got going here?
Always.
Everybody good to go? Okay.
Okay. All right, so going over to the other funds, the Measure O, as we all know, is the 10-year half-cent sales tax, transaction and use tax, that was passed by the Walnut Creek voters to provide funding to help maintain and enhance the city's services and facilities. Revenues are trending higher than we had originally budgeted in fiscal year '25, and looks to continue in fiscal year '26 and '27. So the projected contribution to fund balance is about 550,000 in fiscal year '26 and just over a million in fiscal year '27. These tables detail expenditures by category. FY '26 and '27 include 700,000 increase for homeless services category to support core services, that's our coordinated outreach and referral services. And the cost of extra library hours will also increase by 52,000 in fiscal year '26 and 83,000 in fiscal year '27. I did want to point out that the second quarter projection includes a carryforward that was due to delayed billing from fiscal year '24 from the county, and so it's a little bit higher than it would appear. So those are not going down, it is going up. Staff is proposing to include 250,000 in a one-time contribution to capital to support the Clark Pool and Pool House repurposing master plan. And both years also include the $9 million contribution to the reserves for the Heather Farm Aquatics and Community Center facility. Excluding the contribution to the Heather Farm Reserve, these two charts visually represent the expenditures by category and expenditures by department. And I know there was a public comment about public safety, so you can see they make up about half of these expenditures.
So just for clarification on that one, Rindy, that's current expenditures, right?
Yes, yeah, so this excludes that $9 million set aside each year for the reserve.
Okay, and then I noticed that public comment, too, and is it a way to position that all those, the five downtown officers to be funded by Measure O, are those positions completely full?
I believe so.
We could have the chief speak to that, but there are assigned positions relative to Measure O, yes. They're generally filled, I don't know if they are 100% of the time, as we have staff come and go at times.
Good evening. Yes, all five of those positions are filled, so we actually have names and bodies associated to that funding.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And two administrative as well, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so moving over to the general plan update fund, this fund, as I said before, accumulates fees from development projects to be used for updating the city's general plan, and that was one of the council's priorities. This is a multi-year process, and the total estimated cost for the update is $3.5 million, and that includes the entire project, both that part that's in the general fund as well as the amount that's in the general plan update fund. And this is a one-time cost that covers professional services, legal services, and a limited-duration assistant planner to support the project. To fund the update, staff proposes to use the general plan updates funds revenue, which is approximately $310,000 per year, as well as 1.95 million of the general plan update funds fund balance, and 1.23 million from the general fund contingency for that general fund portion.
Sorry, can I interrupt?
Yes.
So that one's completely, almost seems like it's mostly completely funded, is that?
Yeah, so we're proposing to basically fund the whole project now, so that those funds can be, we know we have them as we get through the process, it is a multi-year process.
We have a general plan update fund and a general, oh, the general fund contingency, two separate funds.
Yes, I was also getting tripped up over that earlier.
And that's predicated on everybody agreeing on the drafts as we go along and not adding a bunch more drafts.
Of course, there's that.
Of course, we're doing that. We would never do anything else.
Got it.
Downtown parking and enhancement, so this fund supports parking operations as well as downtown enhancements, a wide variety of things, including our downtown trolley and Route 5. There's no significant changes that are proposed to the fiscal year '26 and '27 budget when compared with fiscal year '25. Two PSO positions that are in this fund would remain frozen, and the fund would send approximately 350,000 each year to the capital fund to support parking garage improvements and repairs. With those included, the projected contribution to fund balance would be 380,000 in fiscal year '26 and 210,000 in fiscal year '27.
And this was sort of what I was talking about earlier with the parking tickets and the revenue, the whole thing is sort of net, almost neutral, right?
Yeah, it is an enterprise fund, so it is self-supporting. So the Boundary Oak Golf Course operates as another self-supporting city enterprise fund, and revenues are generated by golf, food, and beverage sales, and are projected to increase, in part due to the reopening of that driving range facility. Expenditures are also expected to increase based on many of the same drivers that we are experiencing in other funds, including increases to labor, insurance, facility and equipment costs, as well as the repayment of the general fund loan for driving range improvements. The net contribution to fund balance is projected to be 120,000 in fiscal year '26 and 260,000 in fiscal year '27. Any questions on Boundary Oak? Okay. So in light of the reductions required to balance the general fund budget, staff is recommending no contributions to reserves as part of this budget. Instead, the catastrophic emergency reserve contribution, which would total about 870,000 over two years, could be funded using the fiscal year '25 available fund balance at year end, based on our current projections. The city's fiscal emergency reserve balance exceeds the policy requirement, so no additional contribution is required. And as discussed previously, staff is recommending to use the general fund contingency in fiscal year '26 to support the general plan update and use of the pension resources, which totals 3 million over the two years. To offset increases to UAL, this is in line with the council's adopted pension trust and use policy.
So no contributions to reserves over either of the two years?
Correct. So we would still contribute to the reserves to be fully funded, but we're proposing to use the fiscal year '25 year-end fund balance instead of adding it to this budget, which is how we would more typically do so.
And what is the projected FY '25 end-of-the-year fund balance, allocated fund balance?
At least that amount.
At least.
It does vary considerably.
Yeah, we proposed, we included a range when we took our Q2 update.
So as of the second quarter update, we're anticipating about a million to a million and a half, and we're looking at something similar based on the Q3.
And that's enough to, all right.
Yeah, the two-year, or the cost for the reserves over the two years is 870,000.
And then percentage-wise, by the end of fiscal year '27, we're at the right percentages in terms of having healthy reserves?
Yes.
Okay.
So for Measure O, as of June 30th, 2027, staff is projecting a Measure O fund balance of $3.9 million, and this assumes that reserves for the new aquatic and community center at Heather Farm Park would be fully spent as of that June 30th. Okay, so the next couple of slides, just to have a high-level summary of our FTE changes for all funds. And when proposing the FTE changes, staff considered current city priorities and operational needs. So while some positions are being reduced and others are being added, the recommendations were made independently to best meet the needs of the city. So these are not, we're not taking one to kind of replace it with another, this was an independent decision-making process. In fiscal year '25 today, we have 381.25 authorized FTE. Staff is proposing to reduce those FTE by 3.75 and then add 2.5. So the FY '26 and '27 proposal would have 380 FTE total.
And thank you for this table, it really, it worked finely, like, oh, okay, now I got it, I want to.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, thanks.
So all of these reductions, and I'll click to the next slide, so this also has Arts and Recs and General Governments on here, these are all the regular FTE changes that we discussed earlier. This slide has the limited-duration FTE proposed changes, so what limited-duration positions, they're authorized for up to two years at a time, but can be extended. And changes, this chart or this table has the limited-duration positions across all funds. So the only changes are in community development, where we're reducing an office assistant 2 position, and then adding that assistant planner position for the general plan update. Any questions on FTE?
Anyone?
Okay, when we took this to Finance Committee, Finance Committee requested that additional FTE change, which we incorporated, and they also asked that council consider adding unappropriated fund balance in Measure O to the Heather Farm Aquatic and Community Center Reserve at year end. In closing, staff will incorporate any feedback from today and bring an updated budget and master fee schedule to Finance Committee on May 15th before returning in June to the City Council. And your requested action is to provide input and feedback regarding the development of this balanced budget. And with that, I am finally done, and we can have any additional questions.
All right, I think we'll take a five-minute break and give ourselves all to shake and get the. All right, I think we'll take a five-minute break and give ourselves all to shake and get the. And we're back for questions. We'll start, Councilmember Francois.
Yeah, I think just for now, I know one of the other, let's see, Smedar, oh, there she is. We had a fair number of public comments about pedestrian safety and kind of, I know, I don't want to, I'm trying to ask the question in a way that doesn't get too into the weeds of the budget. But can, what, what assurances can we provide the public that even with the current budget cuts, we're still adequately, you know, planning for and funding planned pedestrian safety improvements, particularly in regard to the Larky area and kind of the Walnut Knolls area?
Before Smedar answers, is that, and I was wondering, but is that more operational or capital budget? Because it seemed like it was more capital budget.
The answer is yes.
Right.
Sure. So Smedar Boardman, City Engineer, yeah, so it's kind of both, and we're going to touch on it a bit more in the next presentation, speaking to the CIP and, and the capital budget too. But based on what's being proposed tonight, the change in the allocation for how much funding would come from the general fund towards those types of improvements isn't changing, because we're looking at closing out and deferring some of the projects that Rindi had mentioned earlier from previous capital budget cycles to make up that difference, that $600,000. The other piece though is that a majority of our funding, actually, for those types of pedestrian improvements actually come from traffic impact fees, and they come from grant funds. And so there's not a large contribution from the general fund itself. Sometimes we use Measure J or gas tax funds, again, not general fund, to, to pay for a portion of those sidewalk gap closures.
That's helpful explanation, all the different funds. Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Other questions? Mayor Proten?
I think I'm going to hold off on questions until we hear from public comments as well, but, yeah.
Councilmember DeFini?
I can hold this well for now.
Okay. I guess my only questions, I have, let's see, we hit the reserve levels and general fund contribution. As far as where this general fund budget is vulnerable to changes in the overall economic outlet, especially the federal funding side, and, you know, what's our sense on that? I, I know it's absolutely unknowable at this point, but where are the particular vulnerabilities that we have?
One vulnerability, just off the top of my head, you know, potentially with sales tax responding to different tariffs. It's unclear how tariffs would affect our sales tax revenue at this point. There's, most of our federal grants are held in other funds, and so wouldn't necessarily, or they are held in other funds, so it wouldn't have a general fund impact.
So when it comes to general fund, it's really just whether or not if we have a recession or if tariffs reduce sales tax, that those two funding sources will be.
Primarily unless.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I think that's the, the biggest risk that we're aware of at this point. In terms of direct federal funding, we don't receive that much. We do receive some, and it could be at risk. In terms of, on a percentage basis, it's not that significant. That said, as you'll hear in the capital budget next, we do receive a considerable amount of federal funding for capital projects, infrastructure, transportation, either directly from the federal government or indirectly through state or regional government and entities. And should there be significant cuts in those areas, there could be major impacts to the capital budget.
I guess the other thing that I would add is even though our, some of that federal support is held in other funds, were that to go away, there, and some of those costs might need to come back to the general fund, and then there could be an impact in that way as well.
Okay. And then, so it's, so if housing declines, those fees that are associated that people pay when they pull their permits, those are, but it sounded like you're anticipating a couple of the big projects are far enough along that when it comes to traffic impact fees or park fees or things like that, that those fees are in decent shape?
Yeah, so we, the information that we included in the budget is based on submitted applications and projects that we kind of know where they are in the, in the cycle. Again, those could change if developers, and if you have more detailed questions, I could ask Eric Cavani.
No, I think that's, that, all right, so.
I do have one question regarding the Arts and Rec Department. Karen, come down. So I'll, and I'll combine it with one of the questions that was asked by our, or commented made by our treasurer at the Finance Committee meeting, and that is, so we're looking at center rep being one less show. Yet it shows that we have a, increased revenues for the next fiscal year, but with one less show. And would you help to explain that for me?
Sure. Carolyn Jackson, interim director for arts and recreation. So when we looked at center rep's budget as a whole, to achieve even more revenues than what's proposed here would require having that sixth show. But that would require general fund support for that production. There is support for all center rep productions from the general fund in addition to ticket sales. And when we looked at the broad context of the entire budget and the, the needs that we were facing citywide, that seemed like the reasonable decision to make in terms of what the net cost ultimately was, or the net, you know, loss in revenue, given also the other variables across arts and rec.
Okay, makes sense. So the question that was asked by our treasurer, and I'll repeat it here, was obviously, as we've seen from a variety of studies, when it came from arts and rec and Walnut Creek downtown, when there are shows, especially with a, maybe a two or three-week show, that brings more foot traffic downtown, more spending at restaurants, more spending in downtown. And is there a concern for one less show and how that would potentially impact our downtown and tax revenues?
So it's a bit unpredictable, because it would mean that the theater would be available for other rentals. And what we can't predict is whether those other rentals would be as successful in terms of audience numbers as a center rep production, not having any real history of having that wide of a window open in the Margaret Lusher Theater. We know it's a high-demand space. We feel confident that there will be interest in booking, but we can't entirely predict if it will be an equivalent number of nights and performances as a center rep production. And again, it could be, you know, one-off productions that they're fully sold out, right? Whereas a center rep production might have some seats that are unfilled. It's, it's very hard to tell, given that we don't have a lot of track record, but we do know that we turn away a lot of rental requests for that space because it's so highly utilized.
Okay, thank you.
I had a follow-up question on that one. What, what is the, like, profitability or sort of the net on those shows? I thought during a previous council meeting, we discussed one that was projected to be profitable overall, so are they?
So it's highly variable, and what we were looking at in the previous council meeting was specifically a production budget. So the expenses that are directly related to that show and the revenues directly related to that show. In addition, there are ongoing staff expenses, there are utility costs, there are other components that are not calculated when we look just on a production-by-production basis. So even that production does still include some general fund support, because it's supporting the overhead of all of center rep.
Okay, are we ready for the capital budget? Or what's next? Or public, well, are these separate items tonight? Okay, so this is a separate item. So anybody in the public want to comment on the general fund Measure O part of the budget? Step on up.
I'm, I'm Bob Weedy, and I, I actually kind of went through the budget document for both the, the capital as well as the operating. So my comments kind of, you know, relate to both. So briefly, I, I think what makes Walnut Creek a great place to live were highlighted on several things here. And hearing them, I wanted to just touch on them briefly. Number one is Chief Knox and the, the Walnut Creek Police Department, right? And 128 people that help keep our city safe and citizens safe and secure. And number two, the Lindsay Museum, same thing. My kids raised there. They love nature now. The golf course, I haven't cured my slice yet, but the new Top Tracer technology is wonderful. It's a great place. So just a quick plug, I, I spent my career in, in finance, accounting and auditing. So when I get to look at a budget document, it's like a kid at Christmas who gets a, you know, new bike under the Christmas tree, you know? And so I dug into that. I put together some, some comments and thoughts that are hopefully helpful that I provided, and I'm, I hope that you have a chance to look at those. I will just make one point from that, that I think is, is key in that, and you've touched on kind of the risks and uncertainties that kind of face us in the city and elsewhere economically. of face us in the city and elsewhere economically because of the new environment. I think it's really important with this new big project, the Aquatic Center and the Community Center and the associated financing, that all the scenario analysis is being done now by the finance team be distilled and shared with the public in a way that, you know, we can then look back and say, if things don't go well, you know, we provided some proactive way of talking about those risks and uncertainties. And then we'll avoid the issue of like second guessing and being criticized for, you know, doing too much or too little or whatever. So that's an easy thing to do. The other things in my letter maybe are a little bit harder, but, but I encourage you to look at those and consider them. So, thank you for your time and for taking my comments.
Thank you. We love a good budget nerd here. Because you're not alone. There's other people in the audience that don't normally attend these things. Any more question? Any more public comment? Do you want us to act on this one or hold off until we get through the general?
I would recommend giving any direction you have on this one and then go to the capital.
Any direction? Yeah. Yeah, we're doing comments and direction. Do you want to kick it off? Councilmember De Finney?
So, I'm curious about the Measure O funding for the police department. We've got the five sworn and two administrative positions that are funded by Measure O. What, what is the vacancy rate amongst our, our sworn staff pre and post Measure O? And is there any, like, just sort of use of Measure O funding to offset sort of the general police budget? Like, how would you describe that? Is there less pressure to hire since we've got these new five officers that have filled spots?
Thank you again, Jamie Knox, Chief of Police. Now, there's actually more pressure now because now I have nine vacancies in our sworn ranks and we're just not seeing the lateral applicant interest that we've seen in the past. And we're not seeing the quality candidates for entry levels that we've seen in the past. So it's usually about a 50% washout rate once we get to the background investigation phase. So it's a little slow going right now. I think people are nervous about going to a new city when a lot of cities are having sort of financial minor difficulties balancing their budgets. So why would you go to a new city if you're going to be the least in seniority and if there's real financial trouble, you could potentially be laid off? So that could be a factor contributing to that. But prior to receiving the five officers, we were kind of in the throes of COVID. We saw mass exodus in law enforcement. So we're hovering anywhere from five to seven vacancies in our sworn ranks. When we got the five new positions, obviously our vacancy rate went up, but we had a really good run of recruiting people and hiring a lot of new people. What we did initially with Measure O dollars was used it for overtime. And then as we hired new officers, we allocated those positions to the Measure O funding.
Okay, thanks. We've gone from, well, we had five to seven though vacancies and now we've got nine?
I just had three retirements over the last essentially two weeks.
Okay, all right. And then, while you're up there, so the idea, the idea is that when we use the overtime funding and put that back into the pool, what we were spending on overtime for the police, I think, is like $450,000. That's being reallocated to the general fund. My understanding is the logic there is that the vacancy rates are, since we have less vacancies and we've hired more, that we, we don't need as much overtime. But I'm not really hearing that we have less vacancies. So are, do we truly not need that overtime anymore?
Well, we were using it for a special purpose. So we were using it as sort of a blitz downtown, if you will, kind of a showing of force. It was high visibility policing. To put that into perspective, with man hours is about, or person hours, it was about 4,300 hours in 2024 that was specifically dedicated to downtown. Now, it's just essentially being cut. So we've canceled all of those overtime assignments and we're just going to try to manage it with the bodies that we have.
And is it, is it that it's being cut because there's no longer that need? Or is it being cut because we just no longer have that funding?
It was being cut because we no longer have the money.
Okay. All right. Well, I mean, I guess then I do have some, some concern about us cutting overtime, you know, if that's, if that's the case.
Well, it was generally a larger overtime budget for an agency this size, but we are pretty unique. We have a lot of protests here and sometimes that require special attention. There's a lot of special events related to, whether it's the Downtown Business Association or the Walnut Festival. We try to staff that with reserves when we can. But we also have downtown nightlife that requires a lot of resources sometimes. So depending on what's going on, we will create overtime shifts as needed. The good thing about a vacancy rate is sometimes we have, you know, we have good salary savings and we can use overtime dollars to shore up those, the holes that we might have and patrol and backfill some of those spots.
Yeah.
But what we were doing with the $450,000 is adding on top of that downtown assignments to really, you know, send a strong message that if you come here to commit crime, you're going to go to jail.
Yeah, I like that message.
So do I.
Okay.
I'll actually continue as long as you're up there, Chief. So it seems to me, from what we've heard in the past, the vacancy rate, it's, it's a challenge to recruit police officers up and down the state right now. Nobody's moving into state. We're all competing for the same resources. And so we've been relying on some lateral moves in there. But that's challenging because there's, for the reasons that you just mentioned, that may not always be the case. So it stands to reason that we need to help bring in potential new candidates for police officers and help to support them with that vacancy rate. Because frankly, we could say, hey, let's hire, hire 10 more officers and, and we'll push the, the amount of full-time employees up. We're still going to have the vacancies because we still have to, we're still recruiting, in other words. We're not slowing that down.
That's correct. And we're not on an island by any stretch of the imagination. A lot of cities are going through the same thing. The difference with us is we have very high standards. We, we're not going to lower our standards because of our vacancy rates going up. So we're very picky about who we hire. We've had a really good success rate over the last few years and we've definitely invested in recruiting with programs like Epic. We do have a recruiting team. We send them up and down the state to various job fairs. We're not getting a lot of steam from those types of events that we've, we've had in the past. So we're just trying to creatively think about the new strategic ways to attract candidates.
Great. Keep up the good work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, stay right there.
Okay.
I just want to go back through the history of the five additional positions, just because I want to make sure everybody understands those. So when we originally used the federal funding to fund those positions, they were in addition to the current level of force.
That is correct. At the time, we had 80 sworn positions. I asked the council for five additional positions. We used ARPA money to fund that, but it was really a limited money and we knew that there were legacy costs and we'd have to figure out some other way to pay for those five positions. So they were not permanently funded at that time.
Yeah. So when we brought them in with ARPA, that was 2020?
2021.
2021. And so then when we passed Measure O in 2022, those five additional positions that we'd added in '21, we used the Measure O to continue funding those longer term than they would have been funded with just the federal funding.
Yes. And technically, that was a new ask to permanently fund those positions with Measure O dollars.
Basically the same five positions. It started here.
Correct.
And, and because it takes so long to create a fully formed officer, when we did that original allocation of ARPA funds in 2021, the expectation was is that we would use overtime until we got the bodies on the street.
Couldn't have said it better myself. That's exactly what we did.
And then as we brought the new bodies on, and so our, our number of sworn officers, although it fluctuates because they come and they go and they hurt themselves and all those things, we were here and we're now at a higher level than we were prior to 2021.
That's a higher vacancy rate. That's correct.
Yeah, but a, but a, an overall number of officers on the beat on the average, is that higher or?
Well, our deployment strength is really low right now, just because I do have unfortunately staff that are injured and it does happen.
Would you take better care of your people?
Well, we're working on it.
I know. No, I know.
We're slowly getting them back. But, you know, I'm committed to make sure that we, you know, we keep the city safe and especially the downtown area. So we're finding creative ways to address that. And you'll see some high visibility enforcement still. We're just, I had nowhere else to cut. So that was an area that we, I thought we could probably cut and figure out a creative way to address the needs.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could just add a couple of things. One, just to clarify Chief's last comment, there are many other options to cut. This was the least impactful area to cut within the police department. Secondly, regarding vacancy, I want to clarify, you know, the challenge you're hearing about recruiting to some extent is similar to what citywide. The vacancy rate for our sworn officers is very comparable to our citywide vacancy rate. It is not significantly above. So the same challenges are being encountered by all of our city departments.
Okay. Thank you. We're done with you now.
Okay.
I think. So Rindi, I have some questions for you. And this gets to how we talk about the funding for the pool in the community center. Because it, what ends up happening, and this is a suggestion on something we could think about as we go forward, it ends up being in two places. Like you see the $9 million here in Measure O getting put aside during the two years. And so perhaps it would be useful with that project to have something that just shows the entire cost of the project and the funding stack for that. It has the $3 million from the Aquatics Foundation, the money from Measure O, and the general fund money that we had in reserve to go to this project. So that might be a good thing to have just as an overall way of, helping people envision where the money is coming from for this project. Because it's, it's in different bits and pieces.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other aspect of it is overtime. Like, to date, through FY '25, we've spent a lot of money on the planning and the preparation. Between '25 and the end of '27, we will finish the construction. And then the cost from '28 to '32 will be the paying off of the bonds. And so helping people understand how that money flows over time would probably be a useful thing. Just, just because we're trying to, trying to tell the story that, you know, it's, it's not just Measure O, it's the users are funding, the general fund set aside years ago, and then how it plays out over time. So that's just a thought that I was having.
I appreciate that. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Councilmember De Finney?
I just had another non, another comment or question. And it was really dovetailing off of Councilmember Francois's concern expressed earlier about, you know, we've had permanent streamlining and economic development as a, as a priority. And I know that it looks like two of the positions that were replacing the full-time equivalent positions. And I just wanted, you know, we're bringing in the lean method. Where, is it counterproductive at all to have this, like, lean method going on while we're, you know, sort of temporarily short-staffed on a couple of positions? Is that, how will we, how do we view that? I think we sort of spoke to it, but maybe you could.
Don't have insight on the timing. So if Erica Vannabran wanted to come up?
Thank you very much for your question. So City Manager Dan Buckshai really got to the heart of it in terms of even if we were to start hiring today, it would still be four or five months. And so it's just a little bit longer during the holiday season. So the impact would not be as substantial. Now, that having been said, the existing staff has the ability to help bridge because we have a highly talented staff that's there. But, you know, you can't do this permanently. And so when we considered all the different impacts and implications, this is really the best approach to it. And also, you know, you had mentioned going through that lean Six Sigma process. Having that in place as new people come on would be able to offer clarity for what these processes are. And so it actually would be a benefit.
That's a nice way of looking at it.
Thanks.
Councilmember Francois?
Still questions or?
Questions and comments.
Okay, we're blended in.
We're blending in.
So maybe for the Assistant City Manager or City Manager, just, I know part of this, first of all, I want to, I'll ask a question first and then I'll thank, say what a great job you've all done. You balanced a lot of things in this budget. That was clear to me. And it was difficult, kind of drawing from certain funds, making other cuts, and very commendable. And I see general plan there. One area that I'd like to ask a little bit about are kind of our economic development priority, the downtown enhancements, and particularly the, the outdoor dining program. And so kind of what's our experience been kind of with the program? Is there anything in the budget that would help give that a little oomph, a little push to get some more outdoor dining happening in the downtown?
Good evening, Charles, Chief Assistant City Manager. That's a great question. Ever since we, the Economic Development Division within the City Manager's office has put a lot of effort in relaunching the outdoor dining program, there's been a lot of misinformation that's been floating around, around cost and, and the process and whatnot. And a couple of weeks ago, we've, we've relaunched the program and it seems like we're getting some traction around, and more energy around exploring outdoor dining opportunities. But when, to your question around the budget, there is no funding that we put into that. But in terms of effort, we're, we're really putting a lot of attention and focus on outdoor dining.
I appreciate that. Have, have we seen, and I appreciate the efforts that were made on the relaunch and the clarifying the costs of the structures, which are still somewhat substantial, right? $50,000 or $60,000?
Correct.
And then plus the architect fees and, and then the, the city part of it, there, then there's, that's the on, the upfront capital costs. And then there's an ongoing expense part of it where a restaurant owner would have to lease a space or two from the city at a cost.
That's correct. The, the intent is, is cost recovery for the city. These pods take valuable parking spaces that, that the city derives revenue from. And so the intent is not to make revenues above and beyond what we would normally get, but just to recover the cost that we, we would lose by installing a pod.
And I, I know the, the relaunch process is relatively fresh, but have we seen any applicants come in yet with wanting to do outdoor dining?
We don't have an official application in hand. We have talked to a number of restaurant owners who've expressed interest and was planning on submitting, but we do not have any applications in hand.
Okay. I think those, that's, that's probably it for the questions on that for now. Thank you.
Can I add on to that one?
Yeah.
And I think the parking revenue, right, will have a small, I mean, those funds are used for downtown improvements, right? We'll have a small fund balance at the end of '26 and '27 to the tune of like 300-plus thousand each year. So there's potentially some money there, right? That we could, we could allocate towards incentives?
There is. Obviously, that's, that's going to be a council decision and whether or not, that's something you'd want to do.
Mm-hmm.
Any more questions? Any comments? Any grand thoughts before we send these people off to capital budget land?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I want to thank Rindi and Kirsten and kind of the whole finance staff. I know how much work goes into this. I did serve on the Finance Committee and you learn a lot by doing it. I wasn't an accountant, but it was, it was interesting. And I know how much of the legwork goes into it. And I'm really appreciative, especially it's, it's certainly easier to do when you're looking at surpluses and it's a lot harder when you're not. So I appreciate that. I also appreciate the work of my two colleagues here, the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem, for doing all the heavy lifting on the Finance Committee and bringing something to us that looks, looks really good. I mean, we can make kind of trims around the edges, but I agree with, you know, I asked the questions, the concerns that I had. asked the questions, the concerns that I had about potential cuts in, or holding off on filling positions, I should say, in City Manager and Community Development. So I'd like to just continue to monitor that and make sure that we're still able to kind of meet our priorities as we go forward. On the measure, there were questions raised about the Measure O oversight. We do have a Measure O, a Citizens Measure O Oversight Committee, and so I'd like us to, and I know we publicize that in the nutshell, but get more information out there about kind of their findings, and then especially as we go out to bond financing, you know, if there's a presentation to the council on that in addition to that committee, so that we're being public and everyone knows and we're being transparent about how that process works. And then I do, I'd like to see us, I mean, I do, you know, the general plan, everybody knows that's my pet issue, and I'm a land use lawyer, but I see that that is funded adequately, but I think we also need to make sure that there's adequate funding for our other priorities. In economic development, downtown enhancements was kind of a critical issue. The downtown community was really instrumental in supporting Measure O. And I know that I'd like to see, and we included in our priority, specifically included, included, outdoor dining. And I know we have one structure now. I'd like to have more than one. And I think that there's a way, if there's a way for us to provide some incentives or concessions on a one-time basis to offset that kind of significant upfront cost that a restaurant owner has to incur to put in that pod, I'd like to see us explore doing that. And I think there, you know, Councilmember DeFini mentioned the potential surplus in, or the surplus in the parking fund. I think there's also the possibility of looking at Measure O funds for this basis, and I'd like to see us look into that. I know one of the items that's, I've talked to staff about it, that they have asked from the restaurant owners and the downtown community, is a little bit of some financial information about what it takes to recoup your costs on one of those downtown structures. So I think if we could get that information before we finalize the budget, we'd be in a better position to kind of make a final recommendation on supporting, putting some money towards additional concessions in that regard. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, again, thank you to Kirsten and Rindy and the team on the financial end of things. It's a lot of detailed work. I think that Walnut Creek really is the beneficiary of the prudent, or I should say, the financially prudent aspect that we put into this. There are other cities that I've come across that when they have a deficit, they spend reserves on it. And I'm not talking about an emergency deficit like we had during, when COVID first hit. I'm just talking about trying to make expenses, which is not the way to go. So while a lot of this work is detailed and behind the scenes, and the residents will never see it, I know how important it is to be able to do that and to make our budget and to do it with as little impact perception-wise as the community. It also seems like if you have a balloon and you try to fix a budget and spend money in one area, it's like it pokes out somewhere else. And so it's hard to keep that balloon in that round shape when it comes to the budget. I do appreciate Councilmember Francois's comments on outdoor dining. I do want to see what we can do to help with that. I don't know if that means dedicating resources that would be financial, in a financial sense toward that, but I think we can all agree that during COVID, the one silver lining was we had truly the downtown area that everybody talked about when it came to like a Euro-style dining, and we had to take a lot of those down due to the road work and utility work that we did on Locusts. And it's hard to get the momentum to come back from something like that. And so I would like to see what we can do in that aspect, because that drives everything. It is truly the economic driver of our city, and so as much as we can put into that, I think would, we would see the benefits that would come out of that. So I do like that. I'm glad that you mentioned it, and you're the liaison to Walnut Creek Downtown, so I'm sure that's exactly what you've heard from our restaurant community as well. With that, again, I appreciate the work. I know that we have more work to do on this, but I think it's a great start.
Councilmember DeFini?
So as my first time going through this process of a two-year budget, it's been very interesting, and, you know, thank you, Kirsten, for meeting with me and helping me to digest all of this. I want to give a tip of the hat to, you know, my former, my predecessors, because I think that, you know, we have been a pretty fiscally responsible city, and it's great to see how we have these reserves and how the money's being moved around. And after having read through the previous reports and then watched your presentation, your presentation was like the best, the most succinct of all of that, so thank you for putting that together. I've already sort of shared some of my thoughts and concerns. I echo my Councilmember, co-members' positions on the outdoor dining. I think that we can look at how we may, how we may help that process. You know, not just as a, like, how do we help these businesses, but really, like, I mean, the community loved that, the outdoor dining. I mean, they really did. So I think that it would be a great bonus to the community to use some of the dollars to help that process along. And then I do have some concerns. I know it's really, cuts are hard. I do have some concerns, though, with vacancies in the PD at a historic high as far as that seven to nine position, and then, you know, the cuts that we're proposing to over time, you know, may ultimately, you know, come back to bite us because we didn't budget for things that we need. And on the theme of keeping our downtown safe, and I know we have, like, what, three times the average retail theft of like a similar city, just because of all the retail we have, that I think that outdoor, that downtown presence is important, so. But thank you for the.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This is a hard budget, because we are in budget uncertainty land with a lot of things moving around. And so I think what I see that you guys have done is done your best shot at what makes sense, given what we think might happen. And clearly, what we think might happen might not be what happens. And so we're going to have to keep a close eye, and we want to keep a close eye on downtown vitality, public safety downtown, economic development. I think, you know, in the Finance Committee, we spent a lot of time on how those areas were being adjusted. And I think the proposal that you guys have for the general fund right now really is doing a decent, you know, a good job, but we'll definitely need to keep our eye on it as we go forward if we end up with, you know, an increase in crime rate, or if we're unable to meet our permit streamlining objectives. And then on the downtown dining, Kathy and I have talked about it today. I do want to see, you know, it's a balance. I understand that people love the outdoor dining, but people also love parking. And we have to find a way to balance those things. And I'm looking forward to seeing the work that Walnut Creek Downtown is doing with its members to come up with a pro forma of how this might work economically for the different restaurants, and then we can look at that and see, is there something that we as a city can do to help make that happen? And what are the, you know, make sure that we're not taking, helping here and causing impacts there. So we'll have to come up with something that balances. I did, I already gave you my, how to explain Measure O better thoughts, but overall, you guys are doing good. I look forward to coming back to Finance Committee. And do you guys need a motion on this one, or are you just feeling good about?
Well, I would like a little more clarity on if there's synthesized direction from council. What I heard as a theme and the overarching was outdoor dining. Do get additional information from Walnut Creek Downtown in terms of the pro forma relative to a pod. Once we have that information, to look at options for maybe how to address challenges or to better support outdoor dining. I don't know if that's going to happen before Finance Committee candidly, but we can always address that and adjust the budget at a future time, depending on the timing that's required to complete that analysis. I also, I mean, that was the overarching theme I heard.
Yeah, I think on that one, it's definitely, let's look at the information. I don't think I'm, don't think I'm hearing absolutely we want to do this or this.
Right. That was the main theme that I heard amongst the four of you. Obviously, there are other individual comments, but I haven't heard it collectively.
Yeah, I think on, I think you summarized it well, Dan, and I think that kind of, to me, it's a, on the outdoor dining, an issue of kind of coming up with some objective standards and managing expectations, and I think they're related. So I think that we would be kind of, I think the information that the restaurants and Walnut Creek Downtown could provide in terms of the upfront costs could give us information that we could use to justify kind of options in terms of incentives or concessions that the city might be able to help with on the operational standpoint, and just making it clear that it's a, you know, that, so I would like to see the information. I think staff's asked for it. It's not a surprise, and Walnut Creek Downtown, I know, is working on it. So we'd have that information. It would feed into kind of how we directed you on your options. And, you know, just making it clear, too, that I do think, we get a lot of requests from, it breaks my heart, because we get these letters from people who say, why do I have to pay when I take my daughter to the library? So, you know, we have to balance and manage the expectations that outdoor dining is important and downtown is important, so we need to have a standard, I think, like, hey, a restaurant owner is having to incur this significant expense to try to enliven our downtown, and so as a result, we're providing kind of some sort of benefit for them. So I think we'll get there. I mean, I don't know that it's.
It's not quite fully cooked yet.
No, but yeah, it'll get there, yeah. We need to turn up the oven a little bit more.
And I think we'll have to look at what are the options, you know, whenever, there's a couple of different places that people were talking about funding, using funding, and there's pros and cons on each one of those, and we'll have to look to you guys to help us understand those pros and cons.
From a procedural standpoint, are we giving our suggestions on things we'd like to see in the budget right now, or?
What we're trying to do is give staff some coordinated input that they could take and put into the budget.
And how specific did you want us to be at this level?
Well, at least some general direction if there are changes that you would like to see compared to what was proposed, what those would be. I mean, we don't need finite numbers necessarily, but if there's some direction. I would also add, obviously, we're coming back on June 3rd. There is an opportunity to modify then, but if you know now collectively that there are some things that you would like changed compared to what we presented, it would be helpful to know now, and we can incorporate that when we come back on June 3rd.
So, I mean, one idea would be to, like, waive a year's worth of rental on the parking?
I was suggesting if there were other things. I thought I heard consistent direction on the outdoor dining, but.
Yeah, I think on the outdoor dining, I think we're saying, look at the pro forma, have staff think about what are the options that could help make that a successful program, and what are the costs associated with that, and bringing it back to us.
All right. Okay, and then I have my concern about our police overtime. So is there a way we can adjust that?
Well, I would defer to council, if the majority of the council wants us to adjust the overtime budget, and we can come back with options for what that looks like, what the offset would have to be elsewhere in the budget and what the impacts would be.
I guess my, you know, I defer to the chief more on this, but too, it seemed to me that, you know, kind of the budget had been vetted by him and his department, and that they were comfortable in making kind of those adjustments. We have seen high overhead numbers in past years that, you know, you kind of want to be cognizant of that for certain, you know, for sure. You don't want to incur, you know, or have one or two officers incurring too much overtime. So I think that's a concern. I'd like to, if we're going to put our efforts, and I completely agree with your comment that keeping our city and the downtown in particular, where there's a lot of retail establishments, a safe area for people to want to come to is of paramount importance. But if we were going to put our efforts somewhere, I think I'd like us to see to maybe double down, or we have the recruitment effort, maybe give it a little bit of an extra push and see if we can get some of those vacant positions filled.
Mayor Pro Tem, what's your?
Yeah, well, I mean, when it comes to that, I really defer to the departments to let us know what they need, and then we could potentially adjust a little bit, but I, the chief and his executive team is, I feel comfortable in telling us what's needed, and usually we affirm that at that point, rather than saying, no, 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 you need more, or, you know, I don't think we've ever said you need less, but, so I really defer to that, and I would ask that, or I would suggest that during the finalization of the budget process, just continue to work with the PD to find out what their needs are.
Yeah, and we tested this issue when we were in Finance Committee, you know, if we reduce that budget, is it, are we still going to, you know, keeping our downtown safe is very important for the economic vitality and the, you know, the sense of belonging in the city. And I think when we talked about it in Finance Committee, the chief was standing behind his, you know, his saying, this is something that will meet those objectives.
And actually, I think it should be said that when there have been issues that have been happening at downtown, and we've heard in a few instances over the last year, for example, when there were, whether it was bad actors, whether it was some issues that happened close to closing hours, and we had asked the city manager, who then relayed it to the chief, to put some extra rotations around there and to have an extra, I think now is there's an extra sector that includes downtown, or everybody has downtown included in it. This has all been out of our discussion points, that there haven't been additional budget that's then been dedicated to police for that. It's just been reallocating some of the resources, which I think have been done very effectively. So it's using the resources needed a little bit more efficiently when needed. And I'm not saying that that's needed now. I'm just saying I appreciate what you've done when it has been needed.
So, does that give you the direction you're looking for?
I think so, if you're all comfortable with that.
Okay. Any other areas that people want to spend a little time on?
I mean, we did get the public comments about traffic safety and pedestrian safety, and I know it dovetails with the capital budget that we will get to shortly. So just want to make sure, and I appreciate Spadar, the explanation that kind of a lot of that funding is coming from things that are not general fund dependent. So I, you know, I just want to keep assuring ourselves and the public that we're moving forward kind of with all those great programs that you're working on about, you know, safe routes to schools, and making it easier and safer for people to walk and bike around the community. And as we heard from an earlier comment tonight, you know, part of that, I think, is an education component. I was on my street yesterday and saw a young man on his bike with an e-bike without his helmet, doing some not very smart things. And so I think that kind of getting that information out there, kind of on the Bike to Anywhere Day, as much as we can, I think is helpful.
Okay. Capital budget.
Thank you very much, and thank you to staff for helping answer questions.
I think we're good to go.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Darling, City Council, and members of the public. My name's Alex Wong. I'm the Senior Civil Engineer for the Capital Improvement Program. Thank you for the opportunity to present the draft 2026 to 2027 capital budget, and also the 2026 to 2035 capital improvement program. improvement program. So, tonight, I will go over the 10-year capital improvement program and the two-year capital budgets. I will go over their development process, discuss the key program components. As we progress through the presentation, I will highlight a couple of projects in the 26 and 27 capital budgets. Then I will conclude with answering questions and receive public comments. And the goal here tonight is to receive public, receive feedback on the draft cap fiscal year 2026 to 2035 capital improvement program, and the draft 2026 to 27 capital budgets. So, what's the difference between the capital improvement program and the capital budget? The capital improvement program, which is often referenced as the 10-year CIP, or just the CIP, is a long-term planning tool with five two-year cycles. It does not allocate funds as it is a planning document, but it does provide vision and defines priorities. And it optimizes the city for grants and donation opportunities. As in the capital budget, it's a two-year cycle that's approved every other year, and it allocates funds for specific projects for implementation. It's informed by the first two-year cycle of the CIP, and it incorporates or responds to grant awards. So, starting with the 10-year capital improvement program, let's start with some background. The 10-year CIP pulls from a variety of stakeholders, including staff, transportation and pros commission, and the city council. In addition, it pulls projects from adopted plans, including the maintenance master plan, transportation improvement program, and parks and specific plans. The 10-year CIP informs the capital budget. The first cycle of the CIP is the proposed capital budget. The CIP is a long-term 10-year planning tool, prioritizing programs and projects over five two-year cycles. It provides direction for future projects and creates a plan for outside partners, such as MTC, CCTA, Caltrans, and the county, with grant opportunities and alignment with regional projects. So, what are the key project groups? So, we have discretionary projects, which include the downtown projects, transportation, parks and open space, climate resiliency, and facilities projects. As in the non-discretionary group, this includes all the asset management projects. And this is how it's organized in the CIP and in the capital budget documents. So the discretionary projects, these are enhancements to the city. They include improvements to downtown and facilities, transportation betterments, upgrades to parks, beautification, expansion of existing infrastructure. These projects are based on adopted plans, and most of the funds have restricted uses. They're not legally required projects, but they enhance the city's services and benefits the public. While the non-discretionary projects, these are maintenance projects that perform upkeep of city's existing infrastructure. They meet safety needs and legal requirements. They meet maintenance of effort levels for outside funding, such as gas tax and Measure J. So, let's get a little more detail into the non-discretionary asset management projects. So these projects prevent costly emergency repairs and addresses issues before they become critical. They maximize asset lifespan through act proactive maintenance, and they improve budgeting and resource allocations by planning ahead. They support decision-making for prioritizing projects and funding, and they ensure long-term sustainability by addressing both aging infrastructure and new projects, preventing, preventing future financial strain. On the right here on the slide, you can see the different assets. We have 73 buildings of different sizes, 22 parks, 2,704 acres of open space, 195 street center miles, 30 vehicular carrying bridges, over 90 miles of storm drain, 100 traffic signals, and 1,660 city-owned street lights. So with all these assets, how do we keep track and maintain these components in the infrastructure? This is where we have the maintenance master plan, which is also sometimes referenced as the MMP. The goal of the plan is to preserve the value of the existing capital investments and provide long-term program maintenance. So the MMP consists of multiple asset management database programs. So, for example, we have an asset management program for our facilities. We inventory each of the major components to each of the facilities. We get into details, such as when the individual HVAC units were installed, when they were last serviced, and what the service life is. We also perform conditional assessments annually at each facility with walkthroughs of maintenance staff and users to determine the needs and to prioritize or to defer projects. So oftentimes, more projects, there are more projects than available funding. So this requires the projects to be deferred. This is where we lean on our maintenance staff to keep these assets operating until the funds available for future cycles. So with the asset management data, we apply maintenance strategies and prioritize projects into the 10-year CIP. So how do we prioritize the projects in the CIP? So in addition to the condition assessments and application of maintenance strategies, we evaluate projects based on their urgency, their needs, and their impacts. We look at potential funding sources, and then we discuss priorities with maintenance and department heads. We set timelines for each project, broken down into multiple two-year funding cycles. So, looking at the project categories, here, we are showing the demand for projects by cycles and project categories. The categories are here on the right. It's the asset management category, downtown, transportation, parks and open space, climate resiliency, and facilities projects. So you can see that we're consistent with asset management projects. This is the gray ball on the left, and that the other categories demands varies when the specific projects are forecasted. So for example, in 26, 27, we have programmed a large investment in parks projects. This is our header farm aquatic and community center project. And in 30, and 31, and 32, and 33, there's a demand for transportation projects. But just because there's demand for improvements doesn't mean there's funding. Some of the projects in this update to the CIP have been slipping to futures funding cycles, waiting for funding. So, early in the year, city council provided five council priorities. There are four that aligns to the projects in the capital program. We have the public safety and social wellness, parks and recreation facilities, environmental sustainability and climate action, and economic development, and downtown vitality. And just viewing the project categories we have, under the lens of the council priorities, we're aligning the categories that best align with each of the council priorities. So the first group there, we have the asset management projects and the transportation projects. And these projects best align with the public safety and social wellness council priority. We have about 75 million that's going toward asset management, and 59 million toward transportation, totaling about 134.6 million that's going toward traffic safety and social wellness. With the open space, parks and open space projects and the facilities projects, this best aligns with a council priority for parks and recreation facilities, for a projected 93.9 million. Look at the climate resiliency projects. We have 8.9 million going toward the environmental sustainability and climate action. So climate resiliency is a new project category created, where we have lumped in projects such as our sustainable action plan and green infrastructure, as well as you added projects toward creek restoration, watershed habitat improvements, and implementation of EV charging infrastructure. Last category there, we have the downtown projects, with 8.3 million going toward economic development and downtown vitality. So this is really just a simplified approach to aligning the capital projects to the council priorities. Many of the projects proposed in the CIP and capital budget actually align with multiple council priorities. So, moving to the fiscal year 26 and 27 capital budgets. So where are we in the budget process and who's involved? So first, we identify a bill of funding with the finance division, then we meet with each of the departments. So early in the year, on January 16th, we met with the Transportation Commission. We presented the transportation-related projects in the capital budget and the CIP. And then after that, we went to the pros commission, and we talked about the pros projects in the capital budget and also the CIP. Next, we went to Finance Committee back in April, and we went through the funding for the capital budget. And then after that, we went to the Planning Commission, and we presented the CIP for general plan, plan conformance. And now we're at City Council for the capital budget and the CIP together. So, the total for fiscal year 26 and 27 capital budget is 108 million over the two-year cycle. So here are some highlights here on the left. We have a total of 22 million, 22.2 million going toward asset management projects. So this includes a large grant project for the bridge replacement on South Main Street. We also have another grant project to repave Ignatio Valley Road from Oak Grove Road up to the city limits. For transportation projects, we also have several grants here. We received a traffic safety grant for safety improvements on Ignatio Valley Road. And we also have traffic mitigation funding from the county development, the Glen, that will go toward improvements on Ignatio Valley Road also. Going to parks, we have our header farm aquatic and community center project. And downtown, parking in downtown, we have our deck repair at the North Lucas Garage Project. Climate resiliency, we have a sustainability projects. And for the facilities, we have a project to install fiber communication from Ignatio Valley Road to the new community center.
Hey, Alex, on, on the asset management, do we, for the South Main street bridge repair, that's primarily reliant on federal grant funds, is that right?
Yes, we have a, a bridge, federal bridge program grant that pays for 89% of the project.
Have we received all those funds already?
We get those funds in, in phases. So there's a, there's a preliminary engineering phase, which covers the design and environmental, and there's right-of-way phase that covers the right-of-way work. And then we, after we get those phases clear, they'll allocate the, you know, construction funding with that. And we haven't gotten allocation for the construction yet, but we have been allocated for the P and the right-of-way.
Do you foresee any issues with us getting those funds?
I don't.
You don't have a crystal ball. That's, that's fair. But we've received the, the funding for the design work and the environmental.
Yes, the funds receive in arrears. So we occurred a funding and they invoice Caltrans back, and they, they pay us back for what we spent.
And then just quickly, on the Glen traffic improvement funds, we haven't received any monies yet from that developer, have we?
Yes, we actually, we actually received a check for it.
Okay.
In one check.
Okay, nice. And, and are there projects planned for that yet, or are you still talking with the Transportation Commission about that?
Yes, there's, there's several projects with intersection improvements, and actually, that's on a slide that's going to be coming up.
Thank you.
All right, so, again, viewing the capital budget project categories, under the lens of the council priorities, we have 28.7 million of asset management and transportation projects that's going toward public safety and social wellness. The parks and open space projects, we have the 7, 8 million going toward parks and rec facilities, 600,000 of climate resiliency going to environmental sustainability and climate action, and 700,000 from downtown toward economic development and downtown vitality. So here's a look at all the different funding sources that's going into the capital budget. So the funding amount for the general funds of 3.85 million, Measure J and gas tax of 8.4 million, downtown and parking funds, these three funds, the, the total funds is consistent with prior cycles. Earlier, we did mention that the general fund, we did have to make up about 600,000 from us having to close some projects that's already been completed or where their priorities shifted. But we've freed up, we're going to free those funds up and put those funds back in here to fund some of the asset management projects that's needed for the cycle. And looking at the traffic impact fee and the in-lu park dedication fee, so these two are developer fees, and they've been lower than typical ever since 2024. Our, our developer fees have been low, and then also projection when 26, 27, it's also low. So those two categories, the funding from those two categories are lower than typical with this upcoming cycle. But what is also unique in this cycle is that we have a lot of grant funding. We have the federal highway bridge program, we have a year mark grant, we have a safety, highway safety improvement grant, and, and I think we also have a more local ASIC grant, which I'll get into later on. Looking at Measure O, we have the Measure Reserve that was set aside for 24 and 25, plus a portion of 26, hang up to that 22.5, for the construction of the header farm aquatic and community center. And then the 45.75, that's the additional financing we anticipate needing for the construction of the header farm aquatic and community center. The 9 million of others, so this is funds that were already set aside in the previous two cap budget cycles for the initial design, and then some of the earlier construction for the header farm aquatic center project. Under others, on the very end, mitigation and internal, that's the Glen mitigation funds, and also the internal insurance fund from IT department to fund the fiber work on, for the community center. All right, so, let me get to some of the projects here. So we're showing these projects in relation to the council priorities. This first one here is the header farm park aquatic and community center project, meets the council priority toward parks and recreation facilities to, this project will replace the Clark Swim Center and header farm community center, and its design is near completion now with construction scheduled for 2026. Next, we have the Clark Pool and Pool House Repurpose Master Plan. This house also aligns with prior council priority toward parks and recreation facilities. So with the new completion of the new aquatic center, the project also includes demoing the existing pool and pool house. So the first phase will be to create a master plan for the repurposing of this area. Next project here, it's actually two projects. And these two projects align with council priority toward public safety and social wellness. So this first project here is the Ignatio Valley Road intersection improvements, and these are the funds that we received from the Glen development. And the planned improvements at these four intersections, we have the Ignatio Valley Road and March Banks intersection, Ignatio Valley Road and Kinross intersection, and Ignatio Valley Road and San Carlos intersection. And then we're also going to be updating the intersection of March Banks and Kinross Drive also. The second project here is the Highway Safety Improvement Program. This is a grant that was recently, city was recently awarded. This includes intersection improvements also for Ignatio Valley Road and Walnut Boulevard, Ignatio and Wimbledon. Ignatio and Wimbledon, Ignatio and Wiggitt, and Ignatio and Viamonte. So moving to this next project here, this is Affordable Housing and Sustainable Community Grant Project. So this project would provide sustainable transportation infrastructure consistent with the city's north downtown specific plan. It's projects and opportunity to work with two developers to implement a traffic lane reconfiguration on North Broadway. So in addition to some bicycle improvements in this project, there's actually bicycle improvements in several locations in the downtown area. And then also it includes pedestrian improvements at several locations. Next, we have this South Main Street Bridge Replacement Project. So this project is geared toward maintaining the city's infrastructure. This project will remove the existing bridge and replace it with a new bridge. Said again, we're, right now, we're in the, um, we're near the completion of design. And we're moving toward the right-of-way phase, we're coordinating with utilities on utility relocation. And also starting to work with sound adjacent properties on some right-of-way work and some temporary construction easements to get access. So next, we go to the arterial overlay. So just to follow up with the repaving work that was done this last month on Ignatio Valley Road, this project is scheduled to remove, repave Ignatio Valley Road from Oak Grove Road up to the city, uh, city limits to Concord. This project is partially funded by a community benefits grant that's sponsored by Congressman Mark DeSagne. The improvements include, include repaving the street surface and also some traffic safety countermeasures to reduce vehicle speeds and also enhance pedestrian safety. Next here, we have the North Locust Street Parking Garage Concrete Repairs. So the North Locust, um, so one of, so one of the priorities for the downtown projects is to maintain our parking garages. So three of the four garages the city owns and operated were built in the seventies and eighties. And there's needs for repairs. So this project will implement repairs to the garage decks as recommended by a garage evaluation. Next, we have the Sustainable Action Plan Project. So these projects may include implementation of clean energy technology from solar panels, battery storage, electrification of the electric building and equipment, implementation of on-bill financing programs for city facilities, and also EV charging. And there are sustainability project here is the green infrastructure improvements. So green infrastructure facilities are used to filter roadway runoff before they enter their storm drain and into local creeks and the bay. So their implementation also a permanent mandate from the State of California Clean Water Board. So we're looking for council to provide feedback on the draft twenty-six to twenty-seven capital budget and also the twenty-six to twenty-five capital improvement program. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Alex. Nice job. There's a whole lot of concrete there. Questions? Go ahead.
On slide sixteen, the financing through Measure O.
Yes.
The, the forty-five million is what we need to finance, what we're not act, it's not actually what we're going to pay to finance.
Yeah, it's what we need to finance to come up if you, if you add, so the total project is seventy-seven million. So if you add the Measure O plus the financing plus the other, that adds, that's up to seventy-five, seventy-seven.
But our cost will be another, will be higher than that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, cuz they... Yeah, I think that's all my question.
Mayor Porte?
If I may, if you so may clarify on that. What we're anticipating, obviously, there's a lot of unknowns that agree with our speaker earlier today, looking at multiple scenarios as we prepared it to issue bonds relative to the project. But the calculations we did previously, looking at the money that's been accumulated thus far, plus setting aside the nine million a year, the project comes in roughly in budget, obviously, there's, there's some allowance for variation there. We should have enough to pay for the project, including the interest costs and the, and the, and as well as the issuance costs as part of that. It wouldn't be beyond that.
But the, just to, you know, full transparency, the cost to us will be more like eighty-seven million instead of seventy-seven once you include like the financing or the financing cost to us.
Financing, if you're suggesting the, the interest that we would have to pay on the bond, yes. There are various scenarios we looked at depending exactly how much, how much, how many, with the dollar value of the bonds that we issue plus the interest rate, as well as the payback period. We'd like to time the bond issuance relative to the, tie it to the duration of Measure O, meaning it'd be paid off by the time Measure O would expire. So there are some variables there, but yes, you are correct, it would be above that. I don't recall those off the top of my head, but certainly we would share those as we move forward and looking at the different scenarios.
Mayor Porte? My only question, so your traffic impact fee and your Inloo Park dedication, you say those are lower. Are the numbers that you have for the twenty-six, twenty-seven, are those dollars that are in hand or based on projected fees coming in?
See, I, um, they're, they're, they're in hand, I think there were like only about two projects that I can remember. I think one of them's already in construction, I think one of the CaliCraft was one of them and, yeah.
Okay, and then the, the planning for the repurposing of Heather Farm. The demolition of Clark, is that in, where is that in the budget? Is it part of the?
Yes, it's, it's a part of that, that seventy-seven million for the...
Oh, it's part of the seventy-seven million, that's, that was, I thought that was the case. And, but then, and so now we're picking up the, I think it's two hundred and fifty thousand to start replanning or planning for what we do with that property after we do the demolition.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Councilmember Fram Swat?
Just following up on the, on the bridge replacement, will that happen during the twenty-five, twenty-seven capital budget cycle?
That's what we're planning, but as Caltrans and funding goes, it's, they're, they're driving it.
And the bridge needs to be taken down completely and replaced?
Yes, that's, that's, that's the plan. The plan right now is to install a pedestrian bridge first and relocate the utilities onto the pedestrian bridge, and then we demo the bridge and then put it back up.
And that, that's, might cause some traffic issues downtown. So traffic will be rerouted kind of to, to Broadway and, and California?
Yes, that's, that's the plan at Botello and at Newell and letting people into Broadway Plaza.
For how long of a period of time are we estimating?
The plan is for, for a one-season construction inside the creek, just because the creek, um, it's seasonal. We can't work inside the creek between certain, you know, between certain months, just because it's a full, um... So yeah, we're anticipating that first year as, as demoing and putting in the, um, the, um, the foundation and the, um, and the supports. And then we, we start like putting in the span during the second year.
And, okay, so I'll stop asking questions, I don't know why I'm so fixated on that project.
So it, it sounds like it'll make the Locust Street Pipe Project look like a piece of cake by comparison.
In terms of the master planning process for the current Clark Swim Center, when are we starting? When will that, will that start with pros and then work through the various commissions before it comes to council? Or what's the timing on that?
Yeah, so in terms of, of the planning, it'll start with the pros, we'll do some community outreach, we'll do a variety of different, you know, just outreach to the community at, at pop-ups, that sort of thing.
Starting this year or?
Yes, our, our plan is to start later in the year, probably in the fall.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Public comment on capital improvements? Okay. We are not a lively bunch on this, do you feel? Are there, anybody feel compelled to make closing statements? Go ahead, yeah, it's comment.
Comment time, okay.
It's comment time.
I don't need to go first, but...
You are going first, cuz everybody else is not, they're doing eye avoidance, so...
Oh, okay, all right. So, yeah, thank you for the presentation, that was very good. My, uh, my comments, um, one of them pertains to, uh, the sidewalks that were brought up earlier and where those fit in the capital budget or capital improvement program, depending on where they are. But one of the issues being that certain areas of the city have no sidewalks, right? And, um, and, and some are more impacted by that than others, there's higher traffic through there. I know we spoke about Larky earlier and like every, every side street sort of like beelines for the freeway, so there's a tendency to wanna drive faster in those areas. And one, um, idea that, that's been brought up is using a, a special assessment district to finance, to help finance in those localities. In such an arrangement, would the city then also participate? Like, would we come up with some arrangement where if the neighborhood could fund through a special assessment district, a certain amount that we might have it in the budget to fill in the, the gap there to help those neighborhoods get the sidewalks that they want? So one idea that I had, I don't know if that's a question or more of a comment, but does anyone, is that a thing that can be done?
It's certainly an option. I just, and I don't know if we wanna have our, our city engineers speak to how we prioritize projects and look at things in just a moment here in terms of traffic. You can imagine there are a lot of areas, as you noted throughout the city, that have sidewalks, have different, some that don't, uh, many that do not, and, and various types of traffic issues. In terms of an assessment district for a certain area, obviously, however the geographic area is defined, those folks would have to vote to effectively assess or tax themselves to do that, that is a...
It's a two-thirds vote?
Depends how it's structured, but most likely, the city would have to be involved in terms of administering that process and collecting those funds and then ultimately doling those out for projects. It's certainly something that could be looked at, we could explore those. I do wanna highlight that is a very, very big lift to do that. It's a very involved process, not only in the city's half, but on behalf of the residents that might be interested as well. So if that were something that certain neighborhoods were interested in, we could explore it and we'd have to come back and have discussions about priorities and how that fits with some other existing priorities. So it certainly could be done, but it's, uh, it's a significant lift to do so.
Just wanted to get that out there, cuz I know that's been an, an area of interest from the community.
Great, and I'll just go ahead and add, I'm just teeing off of what City Manager Buck Shai was mentioning about prioritization for those types of facilities. As I had mentioned before, we don't currently use general funds for building new sidewalks. As Alex had presented on earlier, we were talking about asset management, we're maintaining our existing infrastructure, not looking at building new facilities. Those are really those discretionary projects and filling those gaps. And so we do have some projects in the capital budget, along with what's being proposed in the CIP that would, that can fill some smaller gaps. But it's not, when we do try and do those types of gap-filling projects, we're looking to the general plan to guide us on what those locations should be and along with the council priorities. And so that really looks and speaks to areas around schools, high-traffic areas, for example, in the downtown, connections to any other kind of like really large pedestrian or, or even bicycle, depending on, you know, what kind of thing we're building, but, um, generators. And so those connections to other larger facilities. So that's how we prioritize where we, where we place that infrastructure.
And while you're up there, uh, cuz I think you are familiar with our bike master plan as well, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So we were talking about in the downtown, uh, in doing some bike improvements in the, in the current capital budget. Uh, I know an interest of mine, and I think a number of other people have, have expressed this interest, is trying to connect our, our trail systems from Walnut Creek to the La Miranda Trail System, Iron Horse, right? Which is that Olympic corridor. So I'm taking this opportunity to advocate for us to put that into the budget in the near future and, and see if we can't, you know, start on that project. And, and while we're doing the downtown bike improvements now, will we be at all accounting for the fact that we might have that Olympic corridor coming?
Yeah, absolutely, so two components. There's two alignments that were actually called out in that Olympic Boulevard corridor plan, which is that connection from the Lo, from the Lafayette Trail to the Iron Horse Trail. One of them is along Newell Avenue. And then one of them kind of goes around the freeway and then connects along Olympic Boulevard itself. Olympic Boulevard is actually very challenging because it prevents a very uncomfortable dynamic between vehicles and cyclists because of the freeway interchange. So that Newell Avenue option has been explored and staff is actually exploring it now and should be taking it to Transportation Commission soon, but they're actually doing a preliminary analysis. We have funding in a previous cycle through the OBAG III grant funds to improve the Broadway-Newell intersection, and that's really beneficial to the downtown Kaiser and Los Lomas High School. And whatever improvements we do at that intersection, we don't wanna preclude any improvements to Newell Avenue for bike, uh, bike connections. And actually, city staff will be at Broadway and Newell next Thursday for Bike to Wherever Day, doing outreach on exactly that, on some Newell Avenue concepts, so we'll be collecting feedback.
Great. Maybe two other comments. While we're resurfacing in the capital budget, while we're resurfacing the tennis courts at Rudger this summer, I would, I would propose that we also resurface the pickleball courts, cuz they're pretty beat up as well. And, um, I think that's all I have.
Yeah, we have in our plans right now, I think the project's already bid out to resurface the, uh, the, the three tennis courts at Rudger and then the three tennis courts at Alba Lotto. The, um, I think the pickleball courts, um, were resurfaced in around twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. The, the return cycle is usually around ten years or so. It's currently, it's not due, but, um, it's not currently planned. But in, in the upcoming cycle, we could, that's something we could...
They get a lot more use, I think, than the other ones. There, there's some significant cracks and degeneration there.
Yeah, and we've taken a look at that, and that's something that's on our list. It's probably going to, you know, get some work sooner rather than later. Back in two thousand and eighteen, there was some work, it wasn't a complete resurface, as we looked at our records. And so, yeah, so we'll, we're gonna go back and take a look at that and just see how we can fit it into our program.
Thank you for putting all of this together, I know how much work it involves. And having seen it at the Finance Committee and, uh, and appreciate what we had seen there. I mean, I think we're on the right track on this and, uh, look forward to the next iteration.
Yeah, same here, you know, we've seen in finance, you guys do a good job of maintaining our assets. It is unfortunate that we don't have enough general fund to do all the sidewalk replacement that people want. But if people, you know, are interested in doing something about it, it's something that we can weave in to future years. But, um, you know, doing the benefit assessment district and going through that process. I don't think we have the capacity to do it now. And I think it would be something that we would have to look to the neighbors to really champion in a very hearty way with a full understanding of what, sidewalk projects are deceptive. You think it's just a sidewalk. I mean, what is the Walnut Heights sidewalk project? I mean, that's... How, I mean, that's, every time I look at that, it's like, wow, that's really expensive.
Yeah, it's about 2, 2 million.
Yeah, 2 million for a couple of blocks.
It's challenging.
Yeah. So Larky would be similar. And it, it's just, it's just a fact of life. You know, my husband's an engineer, so when we looked for our house, he was absolutely insistent on curb gutter and sidewalk. So there we are.
Yeah. Great, great work, Alex. Nice presentation and looking forward to seeing this come forward. I'm particularly excited about the South Main Street Bridge project and the.
Mike?
And the park, I thought someone was yelling at me, but I was ignoring them. And the park master plan process, I think that's going to be exciting for Heather Farm. And on the sidewalk, it is a challenge, right? When an area is already developed, because normally, as part of the development process, those sidewalks get built as part of that development. And so to go back and try to recreate them decades after the area has been developed is, is challenging to say the least. I think Smedard did a good job of explaining how staff prioritizes those types of projects. And there is one in the Larky area on Buena Vista, near the school, that has taken part of the roadway and striped it as a sidewalk and added kind of bollards to create a safe space. So there are creative ways to do it, and, and doing it near the school makes sense. But we'll continue to work on that. And I, I agree with Councilmember Devini. I'd like to see that more, more of a connection between the, the trails, the Lafayette Maraga Trail and the Iron Horse Trail, and, and excited that it might be coming down Newell there. And, and excited about the, those improvements, I think, at that intersection where a lot of high school students are using that, a lot of folks are using that particular intersection at Newell and Broadway. So thanks for all the great work on this and look forward to seeing it, well, I guess in June, right? You tell me. Okay. Thanks, Alex.
All right, thank you.
So you're feeling, City Manager Buckshai, feeling like you've got the input that you need to fix, to finish this?
I believe so.
Okay.
I mean, the two things raised, obviously, the trail connection, it sounds like there's work underway to, to further that effort. And in terms of tennis courts, it sounds like we're going to, we're taking a look at some options for the pickleball courts that were referenced. So it sounds like the two main items were addressed.
And then communicating to the people that are interested in sidewalks what the options are. And I think you, you're well on the way to getting that answer up to them. And with that, I put my thing away. Are we done? I think we're done. Yeah. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for making it here, and thank you for those who enjoy budgets.